Okay, good evening, guys. This is a work session tonight, so we appreciate your participation. We're gonna, we've got a lot to cover tonight, so we're gonna try to roll downhill. We're gonna roll right into budget after this. This is January fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen, and it is four thirty-ish. So we've got some mayor's awards next week. Number two is a public hearing, consideration of an ordinance, amending ordinance number thirty-three twenty-three, amending section F, applicability of the plan, and section L, application requirements of the urban revitalization plan for the city of Burlington, Iowa. See the first reading on this, Mr. Tisland?
This is for our tax abatement program. Currently, our requirements state that a property owner must file an exemption by February first after the calendar year in which the project was completed. We've had requests in the past to file at a later date due to various reasons, whether the completion's done right at the end of the year or they're partially completed. There's been some, I guess, discussion on what's appropriate for a filing deadline. We talked to our bonding attorney, and the change here matches essentially what state code states in chapter four-one-four. So we're just eliminating what our, I guess, our local requirement was and going, mirroring what state code says for what the filing guidelines would be. And then, just a minor change in F, just changing, since we have multi-residential now as a classification, putting that into our code as well. So, not a real big change, but we'll give more time for filing and we'll match what state code requirements are.
Right on. Counsel, you guys good?
I'm good.
Okay. Number three is public hearing, consideration of the city of Burlington-Brownfield area-wide plan.
I'm gonna let our consultants here, Mike Fisher with Impact Seven G, Chris Shires with Confluence.
Hi, Mike. Good afternoon and good evening.
You didn't have to do it, we did it to you. I'm Mike Fisher with Impact Seven G. What we want to do is give a quick summary, I know it's a long agenda today, quick summary of what the area-wide plan has come to be, to this date. Talk about key components, next steps, and most importantly, answer any questions that folks might have with regard to the plan. So, just a quick recap for everyone. This is a separate project from the assessment grant project that the city is working on. They had four hundred thousand from EPA for brownfield assessments on underutilized properties. This is actually for planning. Those two hundred thousand was a concerted planning effort. And when I say concerted, I mean pretty involved with the brownfield sponsor group. I don't know, we must have had close to ten meetings, public involvement meetings, mayor's meetings with the council and commission, planning commission. So, very involved process. Had a two-year implementation timeframe. Actually, our budget for this expires on February second. But it won't expire if EPA doesn't come back to work. So, if the government's still shut down, I guess we get more time.
Thanks, Mike.
So, the goal here was to really focus on the downtown, the Schmidt area, and do some planning work related to long-term reuse objectives on the downtown that are gonna catalyze private sector investment. That was essentially the goal of this. And part of that included a detailed assessment of all the buildings in downtown. All of that data is now cataloged in a GIS database with all kinds of characteristics for information that we can use going forward, the city can use. It included an in-depth market study, was done by Leland out of Oregon, correct? Yeah. Which is a reputable firm that does these kind of sub-area market studies to understand what the needs are in those particular type areas. For instance, housing, hotels, convention centers, those types of things. So that market study's been complete, existing conditions analysis has been complete, reuse concepts of sites that we, as a city, believe will catalyze or stimulate ancillary development downtown. That is now all part of this plan. The plan is a fairly large document. There's some copies floating around here that I think some people have, hopefully. If not, it's on the city website for download, and then it's on Burlington-Brownfields.com for download as well, under the area-wide plan. So the idea here, too, was to do some of this planning to continue to, one, leverage other resources, both private and public, including federal, and then to prioritize sites for assessing and cleaning up those properties that were impaired or that might be limiting the overall potential of downtown. So, really, the strategy of the plan was to make these redevelopments in downtown more feasible, environmentally feasible. Whenever you have a redevelopment in an older downtown like Burlington, we run into issues like asbestos-containing materials that can crush a pro forma on a redevelopment project, if they have to go in and abate all the asbestos before they redevelop a building into a hotel or condominiums or simply residential housing. Lead-based paint is another. Other contaminants include contaminants that are in soil and groundwater. So, part of the idea with this whole brownfields initiative that the city has been undertaking for years is to overcome, to basically get a handle on those variables, to minimize them so that private sector can come in and do what they do. So again, back to execution, part of this is about leveraging other resources, and the city's been very, very successful in doing that. And Mayor, I think you're gonna talk, not long after we're done, about a recent success in terms of a grant that was awarded to the city. Here's the steps of this process. As I said, significant community engagement and partnerships, infrastructure analysis, market study, looking at the existing conditions of downtown, prioritizing sites. With some of those sites that were prioritized, we then went on and assessed them with the other grant. So we've done some physical science, soils and groundwater assessment, asbestos assessment, those types of things for key properties in the downtown. At the same time, trying to utilize as many other resources as we can, assisting with brownfield redevelopment tax credits at the state level, utilizing the state's brownfield program to help with the typewriter building, those types of things. All that's been going on. We then came up with, okay, we've got a plan. How do we implement this plan? How does the city get this done? So there's implementation strategies that are spelled out in that plan, and action items, of which Chris Shires from Confluence will talk about, Patrick Alford from Confluence will talk about specific aspects of the plan coming up here next. Finally, there's overall implementation. That implementation of this plan, this plan is not a short-term plan, it involves a lot of public improvements. It's a plan that's gonna be implemented over years. It may evolve. Private sector may take it by the horns and get it done a lot faster. If so, great, more power to Burlington. So, lot going on here. There's been a lot of success in the time that we started this project and the time that it's done, not necessarily due to our effort, but due to a lot of the city staff's efforts and the brownfield sponsor group. We have a great group that's very diversified, that very seriously looks after the interest of downtown Burlington. So, fantastic group to work with. So, next, Chris?
Thank you.
Are there any questions up to this point on what this is all about?
No.
Okay, great. Mike, thank you. Again, I'm Chris Shires with Confluence. I'm gonna be really short here, so you do all have a copy of the printed booklet. I know I like the paper world. It was purposely done in a very graphic nature, lots of heavy imagery, 'cause this is a marketing piece. This is a marketing piece to promote downtown and the possibilities, and really to celebrate the successes you've already had. So the booklet itself is broken down into five sections. I'm not gonna walk through each one of them. When I'm done here, Patrick, we'll walk through the three catalyst sites in some detail, but we wanted to be respectful of your time. So that first section, introduction, it goes through basically what Mike went through, the why we're doing this, what's the plan's purpose. It includes a summary of the market study from Leland, site assessment data, as well as the public input, what we heard from the public, how that informed the plan. And then the second section, that's those three catalyst sites that were chosen, that we wanted to do greater detail, what are the possibilities, the opportunities, a general, in section three, the general plan for downtown, different improvements, continuing on, the things you're working on now. And then section four is the implementation and prioritization. And then the appendix is kind of the catch-all with a lot of our background data, the full-blown market study, as well as some of the different details from the public input. And so with that, Patrick's gonna go through the catalyst sites.
Thanks, Chris. Again, Patrick Alford with Confluence. When we started this project over a year ago, we had begun with this idea that we would identify and develop some concepts for catalyst sites within the downtown. And if you recall from our work session back in November of two thousand and seventeen, I think it actually was, when we came and presented the initial three catalyst sites, we had identified Dresser-Rand here on the west end of downtown. We had identified the typewriter shop building. And because we saw an opportunity with the Moose building as a potential hotel redevelopment, we shared some concepts with what the Moose building could begin to develop into. And then in addition to that, we took it upon ourselves and identified what we thought could be a fourth catalyst site at that time, and that was some riverfront development that might extend into downtown and include the parcel that the post office currently sits on. Well, as you know, things have been in wild flux in downtown Burlington over the last year-plus, and as a result of that, we identified, analyzed, evaluated different catalyst sites, and subsequently abandoned some as a part of our conceptual study and refocused attention elsewhere. So, the plan that you have in front of you, beginning on page forty-three, identifies the three catalyst sites that we carried forward as a part of the plan. The third, which was the first previously, was site number three, Dresser-Rand. Site number two is Memorial Auditorium in the riverfront. We've continued to carry that concept forward, but some of the redevelopment ideas that we had for not just the post office site, but parcels adjacent to Memorial Auditorium have since been left on the table, are on the cutting floor, if you will, and we have focused attention on what a potential park development may look like on the old post office or the current post office site. And then we identified a new catalyst site that we thought was really interesting, and that being the area along the Chittenden and Eastman buildings on Third Street, south of Market and Valley. And through that process of study, we understood that there was some new multifamily residential development coming in areas adjacent, and it's really started to create the synergy. So when you look at the overall picture of catalyst site development within the plan, there's this really interesting opportunity for these connections between site three, site one, site two, that can occur along bicycle and pedestrian pathways, that coupled with streetscape development on Jefferson and Washington, really start to stitch together some interesting outdoor spaces that couple with redevelopment opportunities in these great historic buildings that we have in and around the downtown district. So, looking at the sites more specifically for the Chittenden and Eastman buildings, we know we have a one-way street that terminates at the BNSF rail line on Third Street. Part of our proposal was to turn this into a pedestrian-only zone where businesses could develop along the ground floor of these existing warehouse buildings and feed a pedestrian space that was really that place for people to gather and congregate, for restaurants, fountains, different sorts of passive and active activities along that street. And then, as a component of that, to work with BNSF to develop some very controlled pedestrian crossings along that rail line that would encourage people to move back and forth from North Third to South Third in that area and really extend the energy that's starting to develop on Third and Jefferson into this area where we've got this great building infrastructure with, excuse me, with which to work. We shared a lot of these ideas with the public and received some feedback from them. All of these images that you see on the screen are included in the document, and you can dig into it in further detail. And the whole approach to this catalyst site conceptualization was really just to show what potential there was, what this could be. By no means are we suggesting that these are final proposals for design and development. They're simply to incite some energy and get people excited about what this could do to generate more energy in downtown Burlington. You can see some of those images here. It really starts to live in the streetscape, takes that space now, which is pretty vacant, particularly because the buildings aren't occupied, and activates the street and starts to activate the architecture as well. Second site, riverfront. There's so much good stuff happening already, and we talked about this before. We really wanted to demonstrate what a park concept could do to take what's happening on the riverfront, extend it into downtown, and provide more family-centered activity for the riverfront. As you know, there really aren't a lot of planning proposals for areas on the riverfront that focus specifically on families, and most importantly, on families with small children, where you want some active play and opportunities to recreate in downtown. And so our proposal for the post office site, which had previously included potential for a hotel or convention complex, really now is dedicated strictly to more of a destination play and family area that provides a number of different amenities for children and families in this location. It feeds into and from the riverfront development and starts to pull people or encourage people to walk down Jefferson and Market and Washington and really, really spend some time down here in what is a prime site in downtown. We understand the difficulties in getting a federal agency like the post office to relocate, but because these plans are there to generate excitement for the long term, we felt it was important that we carry this idea forward and say, downtown Burlington doesn't have anything like this, West Burlington doesn't have anything like this. The reality is, is that Davenport's the only community on the river within Iowa that has family-friendly amenities close to the water. This is a great opportunity for downtown Burlington to take us to the next level. See some of that imagery here. And again, a number of different proposals and ideas. Not all of these were well-liked by the public, but many of them were fountain, not a splashpad. And the final site, Dresser-Rand, which carried through from the very beginning of this whole effort, was really looked at in two parts. If you recall, our earlier proposal was to create more of a massive park area, the trailhead kind of amenity, particularly on the southern portion of Dresser-Rand. We also recognized there was an opportunity for redevelopment of the cold storage warehouse building or something in that location that could further feed into the passive park area. And so we developed this in two parts, taking the cold storage facility and turning it into more of a brewery, restaurant, gathering kind of place that was more focused on those folks that might be passing through here on bikes and looking for a place to stop, to have a beer, to have some food, or to use it as a trailhead and park here and sort of end their recreation experience in this location. So we threw a little bit of the kitchen sink at this. There's outdoor spaces with yard games and an opportunity for a beer garden and a brewery, and you name it. The idea was, how do we activate that space? And this is where we landed. The second component of it, and again, you can see some imagery here. Now, to be frank, the public feedback on this particular aspect of this development was less than energetic. I think people felt like we didn't want to take that energy that's developing on Jefferson and Washington and downtown and draw it all the way out. And so for the time being, maybe we don't pay a lot of attention to brewery and that sort of restaurant activity here. We focus more of that effort in downtown. And so, but we're carrying the idea forward nonetheless, at least to show what can be done. The second component of it was very similar to the first concept that we brought in, wherein we're developing that trailhead on the east side of the tracks. We know the recreation trail is gonna come down on that east side, and so parking adjacent to that with some screening of the rail line is gonna tie into recreation trail development as it continues into downtown, most likely along Jefferson Street. But we did also see additional opportunity for that trail to parallel the BNSF line and then make a strong connection back to the riverfront south of Memorial Auditorium, which further tied into that development in the Chittenden Eastman, South Third Street area, and kind of linked it all together along this recreation trail. So, here again, trailhead, trail parking, that sort of trailhead experience, bar brewery, what name it, up here on the north, and then another controlled pedestrian crossing over the line here to allow people to recreate or pass through this passive park area, which provided some stormwater management amenity. And if you remember from the first concept, we had this idea that we might grow our urban street trees on this property, develop them on raised drumlins, and then be able to take those trees as they've developed to a little more maturity, and then place them in downtown along the streetscape improvements. And we're still kind of carrying that idea forward as well. Can see some of those. All right. Questions on any of the catalyst sites at this point?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, last slide. We tried to be really brief, 'cause I know you're doing the budget work, and that's always a lot of fun, right? So, next steps, where do we go from here? So if we turn to page ninety-six in the plan, we talk about our eight priority action items. And they're really kind of summed up here, is continue what we've outlined in the action plan, continue doing what you're doing, continue those planned riverfront and streetscape improvements, other roadway improvements in the downtown. Use this plan as a reference, a guide, as a marketing tool. As an opportunity comes up, there's a lot of information on the Burlington-Brownfield's website, you know, on the analysis of different buildings, different sites. And continue figuring out the roadmap for different types of funding options. In fact, we added it to the slide. It's really a great opportunity that all of our planning boundary, the entire area-wide planning boundary, is well within an opportunity zone, the opportunity zone that was designated for Burlington, which is a, just like it sounds, a great opportunity for us. We think this could be a whole nother funding stream, a whole nother line of investors waiting to, you know, invest in this growing jewel of a downtown that we have here. And so, of particular note on that page ninety-six, so continue with the property assessments as we can, continue with the riverfront improvements and the great progress that's been made, continue to be that easy city to work with. That's number three, the city's review and approval process. We heard that loud and clear, that you guys are, what can we do to make things happen? How can we make them happen? That goes a long way when you're working with the development community. There are things in the zoning code or even special design guidelines that you might consider updating and modifying, and we have some recommendations in the plan. Continue with the streetscape improvements, this great opportunity, the Tiger grant that I know you'll talk about. Your regional cog has done a great downtown parking analysis and plan, and I know that you've been implementing portions of that. So continue with that. And then continue to seek out grant opportunities and other financial incentives, and land assemble where you can. Bank that land for future parking and take advantage of this opportunity zone designation. And so, that was trying to boil down two years of work, very, very quickly. It's a lot to digest. I know it's a thick document, there's a lot of information, but we'll be back next Monday for the public meeting, so we can sure, if you come up with questions, then we'll be here. We can continue to make edits and refinements, anything you see in the plan. So with that, any question for Patrick, Mike, or me?
I don't have any right now. I'm sure we'll, after I get a chance to go through it.
Yeah, absolutely.
If we no longer have one of the three catalyst sites, does that make a difference in what's supposed to be in this book?
So, great question. What, no, fundamentally, that, if we do everything right, each one of those catalyst sites will eventually go away, hopefully be redeveloped or some kind of opportunity happen. What we are planning to do is add some of the work that we did on the typewriter shop, the old police station, that whole area, the Moose Lodge, some of those concepts in there as just an extra appendix. We did some work on it, you might as well have it, so there's kind of a free fourth one, if you will. But it's not to say that going forward, there might not be a reason to take a look at another site. There's a lot of opportunities. In fact, as a committee and as a consultant, we really struggled on just what areas to focus in on, but really think that the three we've identified are really three top ones, with Dresser-Rand being its primary because of its location and the fact the city's put a lot of investment in it now.
Impact Seven G, I think we got a good thing going here. We need to keep working this out, my friends.
I think it's phenomenal, and I love Patrick's word synergy. That's one of my favorite words, too. So, when you look at these conceptions of what our town can be, it's really exciting, because I think sometimes people get stuck in the weeds and they can't see the big picture. But when you have you come in and do all the great work and things that you've done, it really puts it together for people, and I applaud that. Thank you.
And I might have said this, the first time I showed up here, I worked here over twenty-one years ago, twenty-two years ago, and to see the change in downtown from what it was then, and the very slow changes and progress we're making to what it is today, it is dramatic. In fact, not just downtown. If you guys could go back in time and just jump forward, I think you'd see it more readily than if you've been living it and seeing that incremental change over time. So, to me, it's true grit, stay the course, keep doing it.
I would agree.
Right on. You guys good?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Impact Seven G, looking forward to seeing you guys next week. Make sure you drive safe.
Yeah, and I would presume there would be, there's going to be a lot of questions from the public.
One more thing before you guys leave. Make sure you gas up in Burlington, not West Burlington. We appreciate that now.
I do, yeah. Thank you all.
Thanks, gentlemen. Drive safe.
See you, guys.
Okay, we're gonna move on to the proposed consent. Number one is a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement accepting the Iowa Great Places Grant Downtown Riverfront Improvements Project.
So we were notified that we were awarded three hundred thousand in funds from the Iowa Great Places through the Iowa Department of Cultural Affairs. As you recall, we applied in October. At that time, we identified four primary improvements along the riverfront to submit for funding, the outdoor amphitheater, shade structures, splash pad, and then the floating boardwalk associated with pleasure docks and building upgrades. The budget that was submitted at the time was for the splash pad, shade structures, auditorium, event garden dock, low over five million dollars. The funding submitted with this primarily through the Tiger, the Boating Infrastructure Grant, and the Iowa Great Places, we actually applied for four hundred thousand dollars. But this, again, was for the improvements in the riverfront, trying to fulfill the riverfront master plan, the concepts and ideas out of that plan. This resolution would authorize the mayor to sign the grant agreement. It is for three hundred thousand dollars. It does go through December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-one for completion by that timeframe, which fairly coincides a lot with our Tiger grant. If you have other, anything else to add on that?
No, we have a, there's gonna be a lot of coordination to make. The Boating Infrastructure Grant, the Tiger Grant, the Great Places Project all fit together and all get done at one time. There will be, we're gonna have to have funds in this to make it happen. Kind of talked about that before, and then we'll cover it a little bit during the CIP plan portion of the work session, but close to a million dollars would be, and I think that is potentially on the low side for what we'll have to put in to make this happen, but our overall work on down here, you know, the Tiger Grant for this portion, this area was about six million, the Boating Infrastructure Grant is about one point seven million, we've got, and then this three hundred thousand, we've got eight or nine million dollars going on here, and we're leveraging using maybe a million dollars of our funds to make that happen on that portion. It's a, it's a good investment, but it is a commitment of local funds to make this all occur.
And what's the year, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one?
Twenty twenty-one, but you know, getting this all to work, I'm, we're gonna be at the back end of that to make all this happen, so.
So construction time will be twenty-two.
We may potentially be asking for an extension on this timeframe to make it all occur, and if we need it, they'll, I'm pretty sure they'll work with us, given what we're trying to coordinate it with.
All right. Yeah, you're gonna need an extension later on that, my friend, you know that. Counsel, you guys good?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, we've got some public hearings set for February fourth. First is a consideration of an ordinance amending various sections of chapter one-twenty-eight, tree service business of city of Burlington municipal code. Mr. Tisland, do you want me to just read all of the rest of them?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the second is consideration of an ordinance amending various sections of chapter one-fifty-one, trees of Burlington municipal code. C is a consideration of plans and specs for the two thousand and nineteen Dankworth Park Pool Improvement Project, and then D is a consideration of plans and specs for the two thousand and nineteen Aspen and Dill reconstruction. And then D is a consideration of plans and specs for the two thousand nineteen Aspen and Dill, uh, reconstruction. Anything you want to throw on there? Okay. All right, which brings us to our discussion items. And, uh, did, did you need to go first?
Me?
Yes.
I'm fine.
Okay, yes, you are, but I was just checking to see if you needed to go first.
But I will go first, whatever you'd like.
Um, you can. Doesn't matter to me. Let's, let's just bring you first, since I brought it up. Why don't you just come on and, and bring it?
I'm glad you came to that indecision there.
Did you catch that? Did you see the, what's going on in my head? Did you see that? Bless your heart.
Well, good evening. My name's Mary Bear, the Airport Director at the Southeast Iowa Regional Airport, and I'm here today to give our annual report and our budget information. I provided the information in your packet, but I also have printed copies, if anyone would like a printed copy.
I'll take a, I will take one.
All right.
I'd like to write notes. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
You bet. Mary?
Okay. So overall, I think the airport is, um, had a very good year. Um, just wanted to cover a few things with you all tonight. Uh, well, the first thing I really would like to talk about is why are we an airport authority? Just wanted to say that it was per Iowa Code three thirty dot one-six. And the Airport Authority was formed to benefit the people of all the three member municipalities for the increase of their commerce and prosperity, and for the improvement of their welfare, health, and living conditions. In nineteen ninety-six, by a twenty-eighty agreement, the Airport Authority was formed as, uh, to be a public service for the citizens of Burlington, West Burlington and Des Moines County and the surrounding areas. What this partnership does is it allows us to be, to help us fulfill our federal obligations to the FAA and the, um, the state obligations, along with to operate our facility, or the facility for the airport in a safe and efficient manner for all of the citizens. And then we also are fiscally responsible to the entities here, so Des Moines County, West Burlington, Burlington, along with the FAA and state as well. Why do we have an airport? Because it provides for personal and business transportation, for affordable air service, and connectivity to the national air transportation system. It's an economic generator and a tool to help retain and attract business to the community, providing jobs and prosperity. This was an interesting statistic that according to the U.S. Department of Commerce, the multiplier effect on jobs and income is for every one dollar spent on aviation-related activity brings approximately two dollars and fifty cents to our local economy. In the most recent years, the airport has supported, the annual economic activity is over ten million dollars. So with our projects that we've had on, going on the last couple of years, we've contributed a lot to the economy. And then the, the last reason that we have an airport, not the last, but another reason that we do have the airport is because a mile of highway takes you a mile, but a mile of runway takes you anywhere.
That's nice.
I love that quote.
Yes, thank you. And then that is represented, actually, on the next page, uh, the, the photo of the United States map. And then the blue dots represent all of the locations that aircraft fly in and out of Burlington. So they fly to Texas, Florida, up to the northeast corner, California. It's pretty interesting when you, when you have that mapped out, all of the locations. Some aviation services that are provided at the airport, charter services, so for individuals who need a charter flight, flight training. There were actually eight student pilots last year or in twenty-eighteen. We provide fuel sales, aircraft sales, air medical and air ambulance, air maintenance, aircraft maintenance, military aircraft. And then we have overnight freight of critical manufacturing parts. So we've actually had that happen several times in the last year where we had a manufacturing firm in the community that had to have some parts freighted overnight to them. Commercial operations then are provided by Air Choice One, and that is done with a U.S. DOT Essential Air Service Program. So the DOT continues to tighten eligibility requirements for that program. However, at this point in time, uh, we are fall, have fallen well below any of their requirements for a successful program. One of those is that we watch for is a two hundred dollar per passenger subsidy cap. Well, currently, we're at a hundred and sixty-six dollars per employment. So that's really a pretty good number for the airports that are in the Essential Air Service Program. Good news was that the FAA reauthorization bill was extended through twenty-twenty-three, so that provides funding for the airport. Couple of the issues we're looking at right now is more, larger aircraft are being built, smaller aircraft are going away. So what that means for airports our size is that less frequency would happen. We are okay with Air Choice One being our provider. They are, um, providing that service with the Sesna Care Band, so we're not necessarily into that category at this point in time. Uh, pilot shortage, we're always watching for pilot shortage. On the horizon across the nation, uh, the Iowa Airports Association actually put together a letter, uh, to the editor for multiple publications across the state expressing our concerns about the pilot shortage trickle-down effect for Burlington. If we don't have pilots, then of course we can't have an air service here. So, I believe the shortage number, the last I heard, was about thirty thousand pilots in the next couple of years. So that's pretty significant. Uh, the commercial operations at the airport actually provide for thirty-three percent of our operating revenue. So it's very important that we maintain the commercial operations, continue to fight for that program and, um, have our citizens use that as well. Commercial air service, Air Choice One with the Sesna Care Band, it was awarded the four-year contract through January of twenty-twenty-two, with daily flights to Chicago O'Hare and St. Louis, weekday flights to Minneapolis-St. Paul. They added an additional weekend flight to Chicago O'Hare in twenty-seventeen on their dime, which, which really says to us that they are committed to our community and they want to be here and see us grow our passengers, so... Air Choice One added a Beechcraft nineteen-hundred aircraft to their fleet recently. Uh, not being used in our market yet. It should be in used in, uh, markets that have a farther, um... Have to travel farther, so from Mason City, Fort Dodge, to Minneapolis or Chicago is where they're using that aircraft. In twenty-eighteen, we had sixteen thousand five hundred and sixteen passengers that were served. That's both inplanements and deplanements. So, and the number that is critical for us this year with the FAA reauthorization, previous years I've talked about ten thousand passenger inplanements. This year, it was changed to eight thousand passenger inplanements for a six hundred thousand dollar federal subsidy for capital improvement. So, currently as it stands today, we receive one hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for capital improvements in the future. If that is funded, we should receive six hundred thousand dollars as long as we maintain eight thousand passenger inplanements. Super news, super news for us. So, um, that should help a lot with our commercial projects that we have going on. General aviation monthly operations were actually, oh, let's go back. We had a ten percent increase to our commercial service passengers last year, over twenty-seventeen. Um, general aviation monthly operations, so that would be your corporate general aviation flights in and out. We had a seventeen percent increase in that for a total of five thousand one hundred and seventy-one operations. So, good news, lots of things still going on at the airport. In twenty-eighteen, state projects that we completed, we had an air service development program for thirty-five thousand dollars. And then we had a pavement improvement program that we did for thirty thousand dollars. The air service development program, what that does is we have to, um, market the air, air carrier, Air Choice One. So we've been doing that. We've, we've hired a social media firm to help us with our Facebook posts, our website update, social media marketing. So we're looking forward to seeing the results of that. In twenty-eighteen, the federal projects that we completed, we, we completed the Apron Reconstruction Project, about a million-dollar project. And then started into the preliminary design of our runway eighteen thirty-six reconstruction project. In twenty-nineteen, the projects we have slated is again, we will be doing the air service development marketing program. And we are beginning the terminal remodel phase for the external side of the, the terminal, and it included a photo there for you to see.
Nice.
Uh, doing some more pavement improvements. And then the federal side of things, we continued the bid phase for the runway eighteen thirty-six project for two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, which should go out to bid, March-April timeframe will be out this year. So, in the last two years, what that totally sums up is about two million dollars of federal, state, and local investment to the airport. So I think that's, uh, that's a pretty good thing. We continue to try and take care of the infrastructure out there to the best that we can. Onto our operating budget for fiscal year nineteen twenty, a couple of bullet points there. The estimated contributions from the three entities remains about the same. Um, to, seventy percent of the total contributions coming from those entities are used for the operations of the airport. The remaining thirty percent goes for a capital improvement. So any, any of these match dollars for pavement or the marketing program or the federal aviation grants, that's what that money is used for. Total income for our budget, our, our, um, operating budget for fiscal year nineteen twenty is about three hundred and four thousand dollars. This is the operating side of things. Total expenses are four hundred and thirty-two dollars. So, that leaves us with a net income of a negative one twenty-eight. But then we add in the member contributions, and so, bottom line, about fifty-eight thousand will go to capital improvements for next year. Except for our matched dollars. So that brings me on to our runway eighteen thirty-six reconstruction project. In twenty-fifteen, we met at the West Burlington City Hall with Des Moines County Burlington and West Burlington. And we discussed this runway eighteen thirty-six reconstruction project and the amount of match funding dollars. We came up with a, um... Uh, I guess it would be a calculation for each of the entities and what we had asked for them to contribute. So we've talked about this, and I believe in the middle box there, Burlington, we'd ask for five hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. And I believe that's been budgeted for... Now we move on to twenty-eighteen. Of course, there's been an update to the project cost, and it's now at about eleven million dollars. So we're here to ask for, um, a little increase to the contribution from the City of Burlington. And it's broken out by Burlington, West Burlington, Des Moines County, and the airport, and who will be contributing how much of that. So we're, so for Burlington, the bottom line, what we're asking for total, in total, is six hundred and thirteen thousand one hundred and forty dollars. Um, or, the grant should be federal fiscal year twenty. And the construction phase should start the summer of twenty-twenty. Beyond runway eighteen thirty-six, we put together a five-year capital improvement plan, so a few of those projects is we're doing some more paving on the taxi lanes. Um, we have another taxiway Charlie that needs to be rehabilitated. Terminal upgrades will continue. Total budget for five years is three point three million dollars with a contribution for a match dollars from the airport of three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. So that's our five-year plan. And that sums up the budget information and our, our, um, annual report.
Questions for Mary?
I had a couple.
Mm-hmm.
Why is there a pilot shortage? It just, we don't have the labor pool?
Uh, a couple reasons. Pilot, um, are aging out. Pilots are aging out. And then a lot of pilots were trained in the military, and then they went into the commercial side of things. Well, now they're aging out. Actually, it's about five years ago, they upped the age limit for retirement of those pilots by five years. So now that five years, we've reached that, and so now they're, they're having to retire. It's very expensive. They've increased the number of flight hours from like two hundred and fifty...
I thought they lowered that, so I thought it was easier to get a, no.
No, they increased it from two hundred and fifty to fifteen hundred hours.
Oh, that's a huge jump.
Just about the only way you can become a pilot today, and a, a commercial pilot, is to do it through the military.
Mm-hmm.
Because of the cost.
Um, actually, Air Choice One is not affected by that. They're really kind of the introductory for pilots, so, um... Their turnover is about every eighteen months, and they get a new pilot because the ones they've trained and worked with move on to the larger airlines.
Fifteen hundred hours, is that standard for that platform too?
Mm-hmm.
Is it?
Then my second question, Mary, was when does the social media campaign start?
Um, we've actually started that Facebook posting began December first, and our website, we're going to roll that out here in a couple of weeks.
Okay.
Um, the mobile website was a big component of that, so it will have mobile access that way, so...
Okay. I'll be excited to see the, the figures from that. I think it will, it will impact things.
Oh, I think so too. That's the way people are booking and...
Mm-hmm.
So absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
So was the five hundred and thirteen previously budgeted?
Six hundred and thirteen thousand is budgeted.
It is budgeted.
It's in the CIP plan.
And the one that you presented to us already, correct?
Yep.
So we don't have to come up with another grant, sorry, Duncan.
Very good.
Great, yeah, there's no reason, there's no reason to bring the muscle, but I say you brought Big Dan, all right?
I have, I have, I have two questions for you.
Sure.
One was, um, in twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, you have rehabilitate airfield signage. Which signage would that be?
So, um, that would be all of our, well, part of this runway eighteen thirty-six program, uh, project will have some of those signage. So, anything that says runway one eight three six, or it's got the alpha identifiers...
The light signage, things like that.
For the taxiways, so... But, uh, everything is, um, specialized in the airport world, so it's pretty expensive, but...
No, that makes sense. Um, the other question I had was in twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, you have required land for approaches. Which land is that?
Um, so around, let's see, when we did our last master plan update in about twenty-ten, twenty-eleven, the FAA identified some, some properties that were in the runway protection zone. And, and so, we negotiated with them and said they've been there forever, and can we just see when those properties become available for sale? Can we at that time purchase them? So we put kind of a placeholder in there in case that happens. There's some properties to the south end of the airport that are in this runway protection zone, so... Um, you know, I think sometimes those, those change, those zones change, and depending on how this runway... Because this runway eighteen thirty-six, we're going to decrease the width of it. It's going from a hundred foot to a hundred, I mean, a hundred and fifty foot to one hundred.
What effect will that have on aircraft?
So, it, um, from their studies that they have done, it will, it, we obviously can't land seven thirty-sevens, but every air, aircraft that we've had land in the last ten years, we can handle. So it, it shouldn't affect any of our aircraft that use the airport. And that's, that's all because it's a reconstruction. It's basically, we're building that runway brand-new, so we have to follow those specs.
Is it same length?
Uh, so we will get rid of the displaced threshold that's on the north end, so five hundred foot. Yep.
You good?
Yep.
Thank you. Everybody is good?
Great. Well, thank you for your support of the airport and your contributions. We appreciate it a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do, Mary. And thanks, Muscle. Thanks for coming down. All right, uh, number one, update Tama Building. Well, hello.
Hi.
How you doing?
I'm, I'm doing fine. I'm sure Wade Adams with Wells Plus Associates. Doug Wells apologizes he could not be here, so he asked me to give a brief presentation on the Tama Building rebuild, bring you up to date with the progress that has been made. There was a historic study that was required to commence before demolition could begin, and it came in two parts. One was a preliminary opinion later, letter, and a final report. We have received the preliminary letter, and that allows us to begin demolition of that, of that project. Uh, State of Iowa, Iowa Economic Development Enterprise, IEDA, has also given us the all-clear to begin demolition on it based on our documentation and, and structural review of the, of the buildings. We have signed a demolition agreement with G and B Construction, and they have begun work. Uh, they are installing, beginning to install security cables to control any of the, uh... To further control any movement within the buildings as they start to come down. Uh, G and B has secured a demolition permit. And, uh, they have been on-site, uh, this past week, salvaging, uh, well, beginning stabilization of the site and salvaging some of the historic artifacts that, uh, uh, need to be reclaimed from the building. We have met with the Burlington Historic Commission. And, uh, G and B Construction has been working with City of Burlington to finalize the right-of-way, uh, permit and agreement, and understanding of how that's going to happen. We're going to try and clean up and demo the building as quickly as we can. And... And Iowa Economic Development Authority has given us the okay to modify some of our grant work with them. And I understand that they're working with the city of Burlington in finalizing some funding for that project. So we will be working with IEDA on the design of the facility. And that's, that's very briefly where we are.
Questions, council?
So you said you're gonna work as quickly as possible to, to take her down. Any time guideline you can share with us?
Uh, it's, it's hard, it's hard to say. Uh, I mean, the snowstorm.
I probably get asked that question about every other day. That's why I'm passing it on to you.
Yeah. Um, I mean, it, it's primarily weather-related and then also safety-related. So um, could take one to three months maybe.
Okay.
Any idea when you're gonna be able to move the fence back?
My understanding is, is that, um, well, it, it's dependent on the right-of-way agreement and, and that sort of thing. I understand we're about a week away from finalizing the interruption of the, of the streets. And then, and then we'll be able to move that back after that work gets completed.
So we're talking a week or two before that fence is back and we can open that road? Is that what we're?
No, you're talking about a week or two. And then we'll, we'll establish the right-of-way that we need for the demolition of the building to happen. And that, that could be another two, two to four weeks depending on the situation and the weather.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Sure. With the history buff in me, it's curious if, can you mention what historical artifacts they're trying to salvage?
Yeah, all of the terracotta work and things like that. Part of our agreement with IEDA is to prepare what they call an architectural mitigation portion of the building, which really describes the history of the project, the history of the area and, and the artifacts that we have are able to salvage from the building.
Thank you.
So you would say, in theory, worst-case scenario, three months to have the site cleaned up?
Yes.
Okay. So that's worst-case scenario?
Yes.
And still planning to rebuild?
Yes.
With a completion date in December of twenty twenty?
I'm, I don't know for sure.
He had mentioned that date a while back. I'm sure it's changed. So, but I figured I'd ask again.
We've had a, a couple of entities contact us interested in developing, having us develop portions of that project for them. So we're kind of working through those options right now and seeing what is viable.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Jim, how does that, how does that three-month worst-case scenario line up with?
It works, it works out okay. Um, one of the things that, Eric, you'd have to tell me what you guys are working on, but we talked about having a backup in case demo wasn't occurring. To be able to go out on our own process if we needed to for public bids. You're looking potentially if, if we weren't seeing any activity or activity that was looking like it was moving forward in a timely manner, going, setting a public hearing this next time with bids for the following. Uh, so about a month from now. We'd have the same issues to deal with that you're dealing with in terms of, right now, there's, is there an approval at the state level that they're waiting on?
DNR has a ten-day period that they, which they, once they receive the demo notification from the contractor, they have ten days to review and get any comments back. So we're still three to five days out from that.
So G.
He can actually start at demolition.
G and B can't do any work this week regardless or waiting from the state for approval on that.
What is the exact, what is the date that they then sent the request? Do you know that?
I, I do not.
For, because you said it has a ten-day.
Uh, that would have been the end of.
We got a demo permit a week ago today.
Yeah.
Last Monday.
So from that, and even after that, one, you know, we've had concerns from our public works staff in terms of, do we have a plan that, for bringing that building down in a safe manner? Uh, that potentially isn't gonna damage buildings around it. I think everyone's question is how well, how do we bring that down in a way that doesn't potentially hit one of the other structures? G and B has brought in some lifts to try to take off that upper level, uh, trying to do it in a way that doesn't have material go, but.
They're, they're going to run cables.
You wanna come up and talk with? Because I haven't heard anything from you yet.
So, um, we have a demolition permit with the city of Burlington. And essentially what it covers is it covers capping off and making sure that utilities are done in a proper manner. What it does not cover is a demolition plan, which means larger structures such as the Tama Building. In other communities, you have a, you have a demolition plan that shows how the building will be coming down. We do not have that as a part of our process. So when it's said that we have a signed demolition permit, it does not include that. We don't require that. So I'm a little bit concerned about it coming down and not knowing exactly the way that that building's, um, you know, gonna come down. So, and we talked about the fence. The fence will actually expand for a period of time when the, the building comes down. Uh, it'll go actually further than probably it was pr, pr, um, right after the fire. So it'll probably take up that whole intersection at Third and Jefferson and then take up all of the Third Street parking and then all the way probably to the front of the, of the art center, just from a safety standpoint, to not have cars or uh, people down walking around as that building comes down.
Then that fence would get pulled back.
As, as things begin to clean back up.
But the timing on that is really dependent on how fast they're able to make progress. And, and I don't know that anyone's got, G and B, I don't think really has a good plan as to how quickly they're gonna be able to make it through that part. But I mean, that's, that's kind of up to them to do it. How can they do it in a way that's safe?
The only question I have is I understand this isn't a city bid project or at the end of the day, it's between the developer and the demo company. But, um, is there any oversight on our end outside of the permitting process that we have the ability to request that plan? Also, do we verify things like sufficient insurance in the event that that building falls down and hits one of the other buildings? I mean, are those steps we take?
In order to operate within the right-of-way, you have to be a bonded company and I don't know the, the level. I think it's two million, but I'm not, I don't remember that, you know. Something like this could cause well over two million dollars in damage.
It could knock out an entire half block or, I mean, every building around that building would be more than two million.
If you're not proper, loss of life and that takes it through the rafter. So, um, we, we have the ability to dictate what's going on in the right-of-way as far as once the permit's filled out. But like I said, without a demolition plan, we can't necessarily.
We don't have anything to require.
Oversight on the actual demolition itself.
We have had structural engineers look at the building. They've given us a, an idea of how the building will come down. G and B Construction is going to run cables diagonally across the front of the old C and E building that will hold everything intact. As they start their demolition project, there's going to be some areas where it's gonna have to be done by hand and some where they can pull down by machine. And, uh, they're assessing the site for determining all of that right now. We've been assured by the structural engineer that the building will essentially go down. It's not going to fall over or anything like that. It's just going to go down into the area that it was, where the building was previously located.
Any other questions?
No, but that's a reassuring statement. Thank you. People that work around, they're always asking me, you know, that they envision it's gonna come down on them, you know, tomorrow and.
Yeah.
So that's reassuring that it's just gonna come down.
Yeah, it's gonna.
Thank you.
Gonna stay in place, but I mean, we wanna make sure that we clear the streets and things like that.
Oh, sure.
In anticipation.
Yeah, take every precaution. Yes, yes.
Okay, we're good?
One of the things that was mentioned in here, it's not necessar, necessarily relevant to the demolition, but the process with Iowa Economic Developmental Development Authority, IEDA. This project was done with a three-million-dollar CDBG grant that was done through Dubuque County. And as this moves forward in renewing that and reusing that funding stream for the rebuild, their, their goal is to have that flow with the city as a sponsor on that. One of the things that Eric needs to verify is what is that project gonna look like? What sort of backing is there being asked of the city? But that's gonna be a request that's gonna be coming forward as this redevelopment unfolds. Anyway, under what we've been informed of at, at this point, anything else to add on that?
No, I think, yeah, they, they want it to become local and have regional planning administer it and not have it, have this outside agency that really has no idea what's going on locally, be involved in it.
We're good?
I'm good.
Thank you for coming down. Thanks for the information tonight. We appreciate that. Brings us to our second discussion item, stormwater credit. Mr. McGregor.
Good evening. Eric has a slideshow for me. If you just wanna jump right into it. Uh, so the, the background of the stormwater credit system, uh, as you are probably well aware, we introduced a new stormwater utility fee structure. Uh, in, in June, we started talking, or we started talking back about, back in March. But it went into implementation as of July first, uh, so it's been, been in place for all over six months. And we've talked about having a credit system where people that do certain practices are able to apply uh, for, for a credit reduction on their ERUs. Um, and so what I have is a, is an outlined program uh, that the consultant, Veenstrang Kim, who worked on the stormwater study and then ourselves have looked at. And so I, I think ERU is equivalent residential unit. Um, it's three thousand sixty square foot, um, and then it's applied to all the other properties. And then the, you know, one ERU is worth two dollars and fifty-eight cents. If you could get into the next slide for me. Uh, so this policy applies to non-residential ratepayers. Um, the primary means of obtaining the credit is to try and reduce peak flow. So that's done a lot of times with retention ponds. The, the, we have an application to, to, for, for a developer or a property owner to fill out, uh, to get the credit. In there, I've highlighted it. A lot of the communities that we've looked at and assessed have a, a application fee with it. Right now, we have one in there just as a, a topic of conversation. I could see us reducing that cost if not to, to zero. But it, reviewing these applications do take staff time, um, and that, and that is, it costs something to do that. So, I, you know, we can have that conversation about what that application fee is. And essentially, what, uh, what we would be reviewing is practices that help reduce stormwater for that property and then in turn, uh, reduce the amount of volume that our stormwater, our storm system sees. If you could hit the next slide for me? And so, uh, in the policy or the program, we talk about five different levels of crediting. Um, the first, one through four, all talk about peak reduction. And so this is a lot of pseudos language on, on peak volume. So the, the first is hundred-year frequency, pre-development, uh, bringing it down to five-year frequency. And then the level two brings a twenty percent discharge rate or less than that. And then I think the one that is probably the easiest to understand, I'll switch to that one, is level five. So Myers Marina came in, I think, last week and talked about an issue with their property. A lot of the water that is, that is on their property is directly discharged into a water source like the Mississippi River. This, this level five credit would give them a, a reduction on their bill. So I think the topics of conversation on this are the percentages that we're willing to, to give credit for.
Right.
One through four, I think they're pretty solid. As I talked with Jesse in developing this program outline, I think level five was the one that probably could be increased. You know, fifty percent credit, uh, still is a fairly significant bill for people that feel, you know, their water, stormwater is being directly discharged. I think the apprehension in going to the full hundred percent is as, as this town continues to grow and development pushes to the west and south, stormwater, uh, from some of those properties may dump into a, a regional creek system that isn't part of our oversight now, but could be in the future. And so if you give a full hundred percent credit for them, you still have a, a, a water source that you may have to maintain in the future. So, um, but I, I've seen some communities for a level five direct disconnect from the stormwater system, they go for a full hundred percent credit, so.
Could you, could you identify those?
Those properties?
Those, well, I mean, those, those, uh, creeks in areas that you're concerned about besides the Mississippi?
Generally, yeah, we could.
So we could possibly identify that?
And you could take them as needed to.
Okay. That's what I was gonna say.
There's not a lot of them out there, um.
Some of the, some of the thing that you're using the, or reason not to give a full hundred percent credit on, on this, we'll use the stormwater funding to do a lot of our CSO work, combined sewer system overflow work. And, you know, those are community issues that may not impact every user in the town equally. And some of, we have people who, residences who may have stormwater that flows into their, into, uh, into our system and yet don't really, their neighborhoods don't really have a combined sewer system issue. But they're part of an overall community that does. And so you, we do some things where we do funding for, uh, that it's on a citywide basis that you, you try to distribute on some sort of a fair and equitable basis and yet you try not to overly spread things where you can't. So I, I think that's part of the concern about and why communities have, you see some that will do a fifty percent credit, some that will do a hundred percent. I mean, it's just, what philosophy are you using? What are you trying to cover with it? I, I don't think there's a great magic answer. It's just how, how do we make a system work that you consider a community-wide resource?
For me, the spirit of why we did what we did with the ERU was to try and disperse the cost to those people who are using it more heavily. If, if a property owner has a property where almost all, if not all, of the water is being shed to a, a riverway like Meyer Marina, and it's the only one I can think of at this time, because everything else resides inside of a levee, which the water's not going to, uh, to work its way over. And it works its way into, to a flood system. Everything else on the south side of town, I can't think of anything that would be within the city of Burlington that is gonna directly.
There's a few others that have some of their own private, uh, storm sewer systems that directly dump into, not necessar, kind of ch, channels of the Mississippi. I think the other thing to consider with that level five direct disconnect is that although at this time we are not, we, we may likely become an MS four community, which requires, uh, water quality type initiatives and monitoring of our outputs. And if we have known, Myers Marina would not be a great understanding of that. But if there's somebody that has a private storm sewer and it's part of the community, we may be responsible for that water quality type initiative, which the Mississippi is something that we all, you know, all, we have outputs into. So we, we may have some responsibility in the future for that, but that is in the future.
Would it, would it make sense just to change the language and, and put natural body of water?
Or at least, uh, do you need to add another level for the special? I mean, how many, you know, Myers Marina situations are we gonna have? One, maybe two?
Bluff.
There's one further south too that's similar.
Yeah, I was gonna say, um, Bluff Harbor Marina is a good example because they're gonna have a lot of impervious, non-imperious surface.
Okay.
And we, we, yeah, we actually have a lot more space than, than, than Myers. But there is no sewer system. It goes straight into the.
Which is gonna shed directly into the.
When Jesse and I have spoken about this, we've estimated about fifteen or so properties that would have a level. that would have a level five type valid claim for application. The other ones that we will have is the levels one through four. There are retention ponds that are required as part of our development. The, the amount of reduction in flow is kind of the unknown. We have not done a very good job of monitoring the amount over the, over the history of what we require for retention ponds. And so, as a part of that application, in order to receive credit, they need to provide a licensed PE calculations on the amount of reduction that those retention ponds are causing. So, once, if we have this conversation, you wanna see this in the packet for next week. I'll put the applications in there. I didn't put them in there because it wasn't part of the packet. But there are some things that are gonna be required of those types of, of those property owners to turn in with an application. So, it won't be cost-free, you know, go into a PE to run those calculations. It's gonna cost a little bit of money, but people where, you know, their monthly storm water bill is several hundred dollars a month, it will, it will be beneficial for them to do that.
Is there anything on there for like just a typical homeowner, such as like rain barrels?
We've talked about that. At two dollars and fifty-eight cents a month, I don't know how much incentive there is for somebody to install something, you know, that could cost several hundred dollars. You know, it'll take years to repay that back. But we, we wanted to get this credit system because it will, maybe it'll tackle some of the larger bills first. But we do wanna talk about, you know, rain barrels, rain gardens, disconnect programs in a future timeframe. Just because, you know, property owners, you know, residential property owners weren't really affected by the change of this ERU system. You know, their bill went up the three percent and that was it. So, we wanna get the, we wanna try and tackle the people with the credit system that were greatly affected by the change.
If you said there were about ten to fifteen properties, any idea what the net loss would look like?
In income?
In income.
Have not run that. We could. It also, this, this also puts the initiative on the property owner to, to come in and get the credit. So, is this something we wanna see in the packet? I mean, the percentage is, is that something we wanna talk about for level five? I could see it going to a, to a hundred percent, but.
I'm okay if it go into a hundred percent if it runs into a natural body of water like the river. If it runs into a sewer system where we're gonna have to have the potential to maintain that system at any point in time, then I'm not a giant fan.
I'm cool with leaving it like that and, and making a.
Case-by-case decision?
Yeah, because there's not gonna be that many. And I, I do like the setup right there.
Well, what do you mean a case? Because if you set it, it's gonna be set, right?
Yeah.
Like, we can't have somebody walk in and say, well, I wanna be excluded.
I'm saying, if we have the fifty per, the level five up to the level five, except for make a, I don't know, level, have a level six, I guess, for.
Yeah, because if I was a smart guy, like I would say, well, the city has two areas that dump into the Marina's property, right into the riverfront. So, you know, if you're gonna hold the line on the fifty percent, I might say, well, what about your percentage of water that you're dumping in? Like, I can show you right where the two spots are that they, and they go through the property. But I would have to get out, I would have to abstain on that because I, it does affect me. But I, I guess I would argue that the credit should be more than fifty. I could see seventy-five and I could also see, like Nick says, where it's not using anything, a hundred. But I also understand what Jim's saying. There are sometimes city issues that affect everyone whether it affects you directly. So, I think there's a compromise in there and I maybe laid it out there and it's for you guys to decide.
Let's squash it. You guys, where do you wanna compromise at? Do you want the compromise out just in this sense with a proposition? You guys cool, groovy with seventy-five percent? Is that where you guys are trying to go?
You, I think you might've made a suggestion that's worth exploring. Do we add a sixth one to, that's why it's on?
To me, I think that would just go ahead and end it.
And then, we can either leave this at fifty or seventy-five, but for me.
Then you have to have some qualifiers. What makes the difference between level five and level six?
Well, I don't know what you would discern that's different for, for level five versus six. If it's a direct disconnect from our system, I don't, I don't know what you would add to the level.
It's gotta be the difference between the potential for a system that we're gonna have to maintain and a system that we're not. So, if somebody lives along the riverfront.
Five A and five B then.
Discharging all of their water. If they're discharging all of their water into the river directly and there's no sewer system even remotely close, then I don't see a reason why.
Hey, but really, you could do five A and five B.
I see this as, could get from an administrative standpoint, a nightmarish. So, I think we need to make it as simple as possible. I mean, it's already gonna be difficult for the ten or fifteen people that, all these huge applications that they have to process. That's why we're looking at the fee of a hundred dollars.
What do you like the best? Staff?
Nick has no staff person to process any of this. So, that's one of the concerns about creating a program. It's, we do wanna have a program that's in place that can address some major categories, but we don't wanna have something that is gonna be time-consuming as time goes on because there isn't anyone.
And I, I feel like when we have this plan put into place, we'll have an initial push, especially of a level five type application where you'll see it, you'll see an influx of those. And then, you'll also see some of the other levels that already have retention ponds or some sort of detainage on their property come in. And then, you probably won't see any for a while. You know, there's been some interest when we had a public outreach where people had talked about maybe taking out some of their parking lot and doing that. So, I don't think you're gonna have a ton of them year-round, but you are gonna have quite a few right off the bat. This is part of somebody else's job that they already have, you know. So, I, I wanna make it as simple yet as effective as possible.
But one more level or one more step in that shouldn't confuse it.
I think that you're, him trying to delineate between, between five, this, these two categories you're trying to create is gonna be kinda difficult because some of that is, you don't know what may or may not be part of your system in the future.
I, I may, could add some more language into the level five that says, if becomes part of a city-owned waterway, maintained waterway in the future, you know, credit system is, or credit is, you know, reevaluated.
I mean, that, that to me is the key.
But what about the?
If there's a potential where we're gonna have to maintain something.
Well, some of that's gonna be based off staff's, it's gonna be based off your decision because you're gonna have, you'll have to look at it and say, okay, yeah, this is reasonable. I mean, I think we always trust staff to make decisions based off what the program is. But, you know, you're gonna look at certain situations, maybe where it dumps into this area, well, I can't do that, but on this one I can. There, you're always gonna have, you can't paint one fence with the same brush and the same amount of paint. You can't paint many different fences that way. You know what I'm saying?
You sound like Tom Sawyer.
Well, no, I'm just trying to get there. I understand we, we need to nail this down, but I think there's always those things where staff has to make a decision. And then, if people are upset about it, they come to us and we have to decide.
Are, are we cool enough with this to call it groovy tonight?
Application fee or no application fee?
Application fee.
Yeah, I think application fee is fine.
Application fee.
You're gonna, it's one way to offset some of the costs.
So, you're gonna keep, you wanna keep it fifty percent?
Is that enough? Is that customary with what other communities are doing?
Yeah, I think at least seventy-five.
I'm sorry, that's where you.
That's where we took it from, is other communities did charge for review of that.
Are you guys groovy with this then? Can you live with it?
I'm groovy with the program, but I would say level five discount, still needs some discussion as far as the amount. But, but I'm gonna have to abstain on that anyway, so.
I'd still like to see a one hundred percent option.
Would you, would you like that to be level five?
See, I, I'm not sure if I'm groovy with the hundred percent.
Five A, five B, six.
Eighty?
On level five? Well, seventy-five percent.
We're gonna see more and more restrictions coming down. We might as well let people get used to it.
I went out to Myers the other day and checked it out. They don't have a sewer system within a couple hundred yards of there, at least.
Well, and they, they have impervious surface, but they do not have water or sewer.
Correct. And they're discharging a hundred percent of their water into the river, the way that it slants. So, for us to say that we're gonna charge them, I don't remember these numbers exactly, but twelve hundred dollars a year because we came up with a new ERU system, sounds like a bit.
But were they paying before?
Nothing. And technically, underneath our old system, they should've had something because it was based on impervious surface. It was just something along the ways over the years that got missed.
Along with a lot of other places.
A lot of, a lot of other ones.
Let's, let's, let's go ahead and taper this down. Let's go ahead and try to squash this now, though. Now, level five, I'm comfortable with just, with walking away from what you've got written right up there. But I'm, but I feel a little bit more safe with the seventy-five percent. Just because, and I get it, I get it, you know, but sometimes people have to pay for their, you know, they have to pay for the school system when their kids are at school.
People have had to pay for trash when they don't use our trash system. So, I'm, I'm agreeable that it, it would have to be a percentage. That's why I threw seventy-five percent.
I'm groovy with that. With everything you've got, changing it to, changing it to seventy-five percent, that's two of us. Who else is groovy?
I would agree with that as well.
Seventy-five.
Let's do it. And, and a fee. We're good?
Good.
Okay, we're not good, but we're good that we're gonna be tonight. Thank you, Mr. McGregor. Which brings us to number four, our two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget, CIP five-year plan and fire. Yes, sir.
Can't see you over there.
Oh, we can just keep rolling.
It's hard to see until what it is.
Yep, yeah, we can just keep rolling.
All right, so I think that you have had at your spots a few different handouts. Is that correct, Stephanie? You should have the, the CIP list of projects in two different formats. One by project, projects by funding source, which is a five-page document. And then, also, projects and funding sources by department, which is a ten-page document. That ten-page document, if you were to go onto the city website on the front page, there's some tabs down on the bottom. One's OpenGov that does not have our, does it have all the data in it now? As of this afternoon, we couldn't get it to upload. We needed to get them to make a modification on there and so we could upload it. So, the budget information is in under OpenGov. Is the CIP plan in under OpenGov as well? So, you can go under OpenGov and get, and get a tab for the CIP. Right there on the front page, there's a separate tab anyway for the CIP. What is listed in, in there is the ten-page example that's fun, that's projects and funding sources by department. Kinda run through that a little bit, just to highlight how that is set out. On that, the first apartment that's listed there is airport. It has a list, a multitude of their projects listed out. Example is, the first one is their main project, rehabbing runway eighteen thirty-six, eleven point three million dollar project. If you look on that front sheet of that document there, it shows the funding sources. General obligation bonds is listed at the six hundred and thirteen thousand. That's where we've budgeted the amount that, that she mentioned. Mary identified tonight that they increased that too, that they were gonna need from us. Federal funding, they have ten point two million. The outside entity is a comp, is funding from West Burlington, Des Moines County. And then, the, the airport is putting a little bit of, of funding into it themselves out of their operating budget. So, that's just an example of how a given project is shown. As you see there, that's in the column for FY twenty. We have projects for FY twenty through twenty-four. It's a five-year capital improvement plan. For the airport, again, that's their main project. There's a category here for buildings, facilities. We didn't have, it's kind of in here on its own largely because we didn't really have a department to put it with. But for the old police department facility, as we have gone through the process of trying to get that marketed, we had an agreement for the sale of that to be used as a hotel. That agreement has fallen through. It would be nice if we could still have someone else come forward and ask to use it. It's still being marketed. I haven't heard that we've had a whole lot of folks going through it. The police department has said they don't wanna move back in. So, and we don't have anyone else who wants to move in there either. So, we're looking at that as a demolition project and then reselling it afterwards. We've got a figure in there, five hundred thousand. We have not gone out and gotten information from anyone in terms of getting any estimated quotes, but that would be kind of the ballpark based off of some other things that we've seen go through the pipeline recently for what it would potentially cost.
Hey, Jim.
Yes.
Do we, what, what, what happened with the?
So, that was, you know, that's a deal where they were putting together cost estimates for what it would take to, they were looking to demo that structure as, first, they were looking to rehab it and put parking, I think, underneath it. Then, they looked at an alternative where they demoed it and used that for parking and rehabbed the facility next to it. They had, they were looking at what those cost numbers would be. I think then they got some numbers for some lead-based paint and asbestos removal that as they were considering what those costs were and the impact it was having on the project. And not being able to get any wiggle room in, in terms of purchase price on facilities, they couldn't make it happen in a, in a manner that they thought was cost-effective. Anyway, that's kind of a summary of what came through Eric's department.
Sounds about right for many other developers for old buildings such as that one.
It's difficult. It's costly to make it happen.
Absolutely.
We have that listed for using TIF funds to cover. I don't have a, an identified funding source to make it happen other than that. So, that will be a project that, as we go through the next, as we go through the next couple of months, we're gonna, we'll be having several steps occur. I think the work session at the end of the month, Travis Squires is supposed to be here from Piper Jaffrey to start the process for doing, for our bonding for the year. A step that goes along with that is amending our TIF plan. So, we'll see a TIF plan amendment that will take into account this project as well as a, a couple of others that aren't already listed on our TIF plan. The other two projects, I might, I think they're the, is it the Roundabout and the Floodwall? We don't have listed on the, I know it's the Floodwall, I'm not sure. I think it's the Roundabout, or Washington Street. Roundabout's already been listed. We listed that last year. Still on there, isn't it? Roundabout's still on there. FY twenty-two, I think. Development Department, well, Development Department will cover what their asks are. There are no, what I would call, major projects within that area. Fire Department will cover their asks. If you look at the, the equipment that they have, the three major items would be a new pumper truck that we'll be bonding for this, this next, this year. A used pumper truck, a couple of years out, at a little bit lower cost. And, and the ambulance in FY twenty-two. You're doing ambulance replacements about every third year, potentially needing to see that, get something done on a sooner basis at some point in this cycle. But right now, you're, you've been maintaining a third-year rotation on those vehicles. Eric will cover, well, Chief Traxel will cover all of his fire department purchases, I assume, during his presentation. Eric will cover the golf course. As you look through there, it's all equipment. IT is something that we fund into the general fund out of local option sales tax, a hundred and forty thousand a year. Park and rec is another thing that Eric gets to talk about. Eric will get to talk about a lot of these. And I guess corollary is Nick will get to talk about a lot of the others. But for the big ones in the, the park and rec. But for the big ones in the the park and rec, uh, we'll have a discussion about what's going on with the proposal for, uh. Doing a major, uh, overhaul of one of the sets of tennis courts. Doing, uh, two separate trail projects, the Flint River Trail and West Avenue Trail Connection in the, during the five-year timeframe. And, uh, dank restrooms, doing a, getting a, a new restroom facility installed. Probably the largest piece of equipment that falls under Eric in that same area is forestry, getting a, uh, bucket grapple truck. Uh, I know you've, uh, got to test one of those units here and within the last couple of weeks. Uh, Police Department's already gone over their FY twenty. Ca- capital equipment requests, but if you look through the, it shows what their equipment requests are over the next. The five years total, it's about two hundred thousand a year, which is right at where they're at for FY twenty. And it, and that's been about where they've run historically. Public Works will get to run through, uh, that's Nick, will get to run through a lot of projects, some notable ones that are on his. Uh, this traffic signalization, which will have a TIF component. Uh, within Storm Waters, uh, doing a, actually no, sewer fund, uh, manhole repair and relocation. On the, in the Hawkeye Creek Basin, uh, Stormwater will have some INI, uh, work done on Brook Street. And then we'll get into a lot of things that are associated with the riverfront. If you look through there, there are multiple items that are attached to the riverfront. From, uh, Jefferson Street corridor, the Main Street corridor, uh, the riverfront itself with the boating dock. As you go, as you think about riverfront, um, we've got an awful lot of areas that are in here. We've kind of mentioned it earlier, uh, with, uh, Great Places Grant, four hundred thousand going in there. The boating infrastructure grant is about a one, is one point seven million. Uh, our flood protection efforts, uh, with this next phase that we're looking to do, um, that's kind of highlighted here in the circled areas. On this graph. The north and south end extending from the flood wall that was put on, uh, that was last year. Extending that, those, some removable portions that go, uh, back to the west. Uh, to the railroad tracks and then have railroad closures that can be, uh, installed as well. That's about a five million dollar project, just shy of that overall. I guess it's four point two that's listed in here, isn't it? This overall sheet of projects is a hundred million dollars worth of work to be done over the next five years. Forty million dollars of it you can put down here into the riverfront area. Between, with the Tiger Grant being at seventeen million in three phases. Washington Street improvements is a little over two million dollars, uh, that we're looking to do in FY twenty-three, twenty-two. Three phases of the flood wall to be done, this first one, um, that we're looking, it's highlighted in the circled areas being, we're proposing to be funded with TIF funds. Uh, the next two phases, uh, being, uh. The pumping stations and, uh, then some further extension of the flood wall farther west along. What street is that? Market Street, uh, and then some protection around the, um. Depot, the deep, around the depot. Waste water treatment plant, so this is a separate item, uh, it wasn't part of the, I don't think it was listed as part of the grant funding per se. Uh, it was listed as a, as a match that we would be looking to do on our own with sewer funds. Um, and what the CIP outlines is having that two million dollars of flood protection work down at the sewer plant being covered. Out of, uh, TIF funding as well, rather than the sewer funds, just for lack of. We just don't have enough funding there to really make everything happen, it needs done with the plant, and it does fit within the overall scheme of some of the other things we're doing. Back into the list of projects, um, I think it would be good. The Recplex is the next area, has a couple of different areas, are things that they're looking to do. Their major projects are upgrades to lights out in twenty-three, a hundred and fifty-three thousand, and a concession stand restroom area. Uh, that I'm assuming that Eric will cover during his presentation as well. Solid waste is typically something, they, uh, do a truck every other year. They were supposed to purchase one this year, it didn't get done. The year is still young, he says, but the funding, the funding may be there, but, uh, the purchase won't happen till next year, so we're at, we're looking at. Most likely that purchase will occur next year unless he buys a, uh. Demo demo model that is a floor model, it's on hand. Uh, something that I assume that, uh, Don will cover during his budget portion will be. As we've implemented the cart system, what's the potential for having a semi-automated? Or fully automated vehicle, and that's what, uh, as you look in there, we have the FY twenty amount, it's a higher amount. That's for a fully automated one to be purchased. Don's still not sure about that, uh, how it can work, uh, where it fits within our system, but it, he's at least gonna be looking to. Evaluate the potential for having that via portion of what our fleet is. And we, we have it budgeted to occur, so, and the funding's there to make that that work. Uh, street sewer is an area that falls under Nick. Gets complicated here, sewers has two different areas, portions of it are covered, uh, Don with the plant itself. Uh, the district, and then there's a little bit of crossover with the lift stations between Don's group and Nick's group, so as. Some of those items will get, uh, brought forward from one and some from the other. But the street sewer area falls completely under Nick, uh, with, uh, the, the sewer. The larger sewer system maintenance and management. Uh, the largest area that he has, uh, within his area is the ma, is this sewer separation work in that. Uh, the key driving thing that goes on. Uh, we've got a project listed in there for this next year, the Locust Basin, um, which hopefully goes out to bid here in the next. Couple of months, maybe, I don't know that, I doubt work begins before we get to July. But. He thinks it could, I doubt it does, but that's one that's, uh, all SRF funding, uh, to cover. Uh, we had had a place holder in here, every, every year about three and a half million dollars of work. If you look in here, I have it, I didn't even talk to Nick about this really, but I put it into two separate. Seven million dollar projects, which probably works better in terms of taking the time to do engineering design. On a, on a project and getting it out to bid, it also fits into our bond repayment schedule, we have a couple of bonds that go off. Uh, in the sewer department, um, in those years, so bringing on new debt. Allows it to layer in and fit within our ability to repay easier. With less fluctuation. In terms of street projects, I guess I can leave that to Nick to cover what the different components are of it as during yours. But it reflects what you'll see in his area for street projects, really reflects what he presented in November. Uh, for the five-year street improvement plan. Uh, and the final area is the wastewater treatment plant. Don gets to cover that, there's a lot of several of of items that are listed there, probably the two largest ones of note. The air scrubber that's listed for this current year, we've, he's anticipating having a little bit of expenditures yet this ye, this fiscal year, but the majority of that project. Occurring in FY twenty. And, uh, then starting to do some work on the headworks, uh, he's painting the the headworks down there, um, in FY twenty-one. Those are the two largest ones, but I assume that he'll, to some extent, go through, uh. What he's trying to accomplish with this whole list of of work to be done over the next five years. So, why do I put the picture of the riverfront improvements, I kind of mentioned it, out of our CIP plan, ten, a hundred million dollars over five years. Forty million of it is right there in that core area. Out of the rest of the work that's going on, sewer separation is nineteen million. Uh, street projects are fourteen million, and the airport was thirteen million, that's over eighty million of the. Of the hundred million covered in four kind of general categories. And it's a theme of what drive, is driving what we're doing, uh, project-wise in this community. We have a few other things, but they. They really are ancillary, these are the primary drivers of what we're doing as a town. Any questions on those? Those long, bigger packets? Matt?
The only thing I saw that I saw, or caught a fan was, um, and I'm sure Eric's in it, uh, talking about it. But on, uh, parks improvement stuff, wasn't, uh, the restrooms and this year's CIP last year, or did they get bumped back?
We've moved it back a couple of years.
Because of?
Trying to fit in tennis courts and other items, uh, within the five-year CIP. At various stages, cut out a couple hundred thousand out of this year, a couple hundred thousand out of five-year and moved. I don't know if there's three or four hundred thousand dollars around in the five-year CIP to make it work, so quite a few items were moved up and primarily moved back in the five-year CIP.
Largest driving factor for why things have been moved out has been. Local option sales tax dollars being. Six hundred thousand dollars lower than what they were last year, and hotel motel still. Seeing a decline, I mean, we were over, uh, closer to a million and now we're in the eight hundred thousand range. We lost, we, we have some other areas and if you look here. If you look up at the graph, like, for example, on local option sales tax, that's about eighty percent of. Of local option sales tax goes into the general fund over a, over a five-year period. As, um, we're, we spent, we send fifty percent over automatically to cover. The whole, that's set up, fifty percent's supposed to be for property tax relief. Again, we don't charge as much property taxes as we could for employee benefits, we offset it with local option sales tax. We also cover the cost of twenty percent of our patrol department. Uh, we cover, over the course of five years. Seven hundred thousand dollars towards information technology, IT. So. When, when local option sales tax money goes down, those are some, some pieces that they don't get cut. Local option sales tax also covers equipment for the different departments, that's, so, that's two point seven million. If you add that to this, the general fund portion, the sixteen point four million, you're over ninety percent of it's already committed. And when you have, again, when things get cut out, it's the projects. We don't cut out equipment if at all possible. That being said, engineering lost a P, a, a vehicle that they had in for FY twenty-two that they were asking for. Just in terms of prioritization, where does it fit? In past years, and, well, actually Eric has pushed in this, what's presented here, I don't know if you had any that were. Any pieces of equipment cut out, but I know you had to push back years. In past years, you've had pieces of equipment pushed out because we can't afford it. But, and what I kind of want to highlight here, so you look here at local option sales tax. Debt service at three hundred and fifty thousand. Economic development, fifty thousand a year, totals two hundred and fifty thousand. The Bs, we're committed to providing the fifty thousand a year, two hundred and fifty thousand. Housing programs, which is like housing demo, matching for, uh, the, some of the rehab grants that are ministers through Southeast Iowa Regional Planning. Uh, the only pro, project that's up here, local option sales tax, is that, is two trails. That's the only projects that are being done with local option sales tax money. And that's really a, that's a sad spot to be in, to have that little flexibility, we weren't, three years ago, we had, or two years ago. When we were at four and a half million instead of three point nine or under three point nine million for funding. We had several projects that we were looking at to to be able to fund out of here, and they've, they've just been forced out. So, there's a couple of categories there. Repair improvements, that was listed up there, uh, three hundred and seventy-three thousand for facilities. What is that? Uh, pool has four or five different projects, the heater, some deckwork. Um, are the two major components, but there's a couple others as well. The Recplex has. Forgot. Concession stand that they're looking to build, it's their major project in that. So I guess there is a second project besides trails. ADA facility audits, this is something that we really need to be doing. Doing facility audits is something that we should have done twenty years ago. And we're not doing it yet, we're doing it, we have it set, I think, in twenty-two in the budget, this five-year CIP. But it's where we can get fitted in and and make it happen. The senior center, it's listed there for seventy-eight thousand, I don't know that we really have a great spot to cover it, but the roof has a leak. Uh, that's something that we have the estimate to, or preliminary estimate to, for what it's gonna cost to get that done this next fiscal year. Energy efficiency. I can't remember which facility this is for. Yeah, I think that Nick, you'll be covering ener, the energy efficiency under your presentation. Uh, we have some funds that we're immediately gonna spend on energy efficiency, some cash on hand for the. Uh, senior center yet this fiscal year, and I can't remember the other project that you'll have coming up, but you will have one. And, uh, who, who buys equipment? If we go back, their equipment's the second largest category for local option sales tax at two point seven million. Two biggest pieces of that are police and fire to cover their equipment. Uh, all of police's e- equipment that's on their fi, on their. Uh, five-year CIP is coming out of local option sales tax. The majority of the fire departments is, is out of here, the, the exception is that new, is the new pumper truck in this, in fiscal year twenty, which is a, a bonded item. It's hard to, it's one of the few items that's a piece of equipment that ju, that you can really justify bonding for. That has a life cycle that's long enough to, that you can really justify that. Uh, forestry is the next largest category and out of four hundred thousand, three hundred and ten is one piece of equipment. You see a breakdown then for the transit that's looking to try to, try to get five buses over five years. That's kind of dependent on how you do, in ter, how successful you can be in obtaining grant funds. To do the matches on that. Hotel motel tax usage, the other area that we have some flexibility to provide funding for projects. The lion's share of, uh, convention, well, thirty percent goes to convention and tourism, uh, we provide that over the chamber. Uh, for the, for running the welcome center, doing other promotional materials, and it's why we try to have a cu, about two presentations a year. Uh, that she, that she comes and makes over what, what, uh, they're doing, and it's. You, we need to have those done, so you can keep up to date how they're spending and using her money, are they using it wisely and effectively? But we provide a lot of assistance to the general fund, nine hundred thousand just goes over to support basic rec programs. Hotel motel tax usage by, by code, half of it has to be used for. some type of cultural recreational type programming. Pretty much all of what we do out of here meets that requirement. Even with the general fund, what's going over there essentially subsidizes our ability to have an auditorium or ability to run parks programs over a five year period. The third, the third largest item in there wasn't the third largest item four years ago or six years ago. Recplex, that's basic operations support, not equipment. Five hundred and fifteen thousand over five years. It's becoming a larger crimp on our ability to fund projects and if that's another even along with hotel motel tax overall revenues being down, having to fund basic operations is is a larger and larger issue. And not only is it there, one of the categories off to the side of it, just to the left, it isn't printed correctly. Golf course, we're putting about seventy thousand dollars into that over a five year basis. We haven't had to put money into it for basic operations. So, we're seeing this being used for support of things that just weren't there before and and that really reflects a changing changing dynamics of how those facilities are used. Out of this, let's see, if you look through the other categories, what does it mean that we have left? For actual projects, we have two major projects in there, Recplex lighting, riverfront improvements. And that riverfront improvements at a hundred thousand, that's occurring in FY twenty to do the match on the boating infrastructure grant planning. That's that in itself has forced out some of and forced Eric to have to move some of his projects back. So, the council has done some decisions that have, I mean, staff is encouraged. We've been working on the great places designation for the down the downtown area, but moving forward and going and saying, we're gonna make sure that we prioritize it means that we have seen areas that get have that get pushed out. So just be cognizant every time we add something in here or take on something different, it ends up having an impact somewhere else. Tax increment financing or excrement financing as some have called it.
Thank you, sir.
You're quite welcome. Happy to do that.
If you had a leather jacket, Jim?
I don't think I could look anywhere in my closet and find one of those. So over a five year basis, the the usage that we're proposing is pretty much all infrastructure. Five hundred thousand for the demolition of the old, the former police department building. Flood protection in two separate phases. Four point two million for the next phase of the downtown flood wall and two million out in fiscal twenty-four for protection out of the sewer plant. And then roadway improvements, three point four four million. There's four basic projects that are in that. Washington Street reconstruction, one point two million. The adaptive signalization that we've talked about for the Highway sixty-one corridor, about five hundred thousand. Division Street roundabout, Division Street in Mount Pleasant, is that the intersection? West Burlington Avenue, whatever. Get two streets that actually cross. Eight hundred thousand. Broadway extension to extend that street to the to the south, do some, actually add some parking into the parking lot at the Recplex and adjust where the trail's at through there. Yeah, it's all, it's associated with the rise grant project. This is the match for it. That Broadway extension is about nine hundred thousand.
The Broadway extension is what?
Nine hundred thousand for that project. That's actually our match on it. The rise portion don't have it in front of me, but I wanna say that's in the seven hundred thousand range. We'll use we'll use geo debt. What I have up here is there's there's actually two pha- two phases of the flood wall construction that will be geo debt that I don't include in here. They're supposed to be paid back for from sales tax growth, which kinda talked about last week. There has been none the last couple of years. We'd seen some growth and then the last two, last year and then so far this year, we have not seen any funding come through that stream. We do anticipate being able to to accommodate at least a portion of the work that we've wanted to do with the with the flood improvements with that funding and not be reliant on on our own funding stream. But it it is something that we have to fund locally and and taking any of those projects on is a risk as we've found out all too well with the first phase.
Jim? Real quick, I have a question on that. So, that funding source is, the amount of funding is based off of a I guess, a level that was established at that time that funding was established, correct?
So the state looked at what the sales tax collection were, what they had for their six percent sales tax collections in two thousand fifteen, I think was the base fiscal year.
Which we all understand was a peak time for the amount of sales tax collection.
And we actually saw the peak the following year, cause two thousand sixteen was the first year that we received funding with that.
Correct.
We we had our full funding for the increment, what our what our projected increment halfway through the year. We were well ahead of schedule and we were still pacing ahead of schedule into two thousand seventeen through the first two quarters and then it tanked. So that's that's really where the peak would have been, was right about the end of two thousand sixteen. But go ahead.
My question is that base, that that number where the increment starts, does that ever get reestablished?
It doesn't get reset.
Ever?
No, and you know, that's one of the, besides our collections being down locally with a large part of it being when that construction project ended, they they've changed the formula a couple of times. The there are component units of manufacturing operations such as Case used to pay a sales tax on their components. The state came up with a they did a modification to their sales tax collection formula where they no longer charge for their components, the sales taxes. But they didn't make that up, that that's not made up for in this formula. So that was lost, lost. We we no longer have that that piece, but they didn't adjust the formula for it. Another component, they made a change to how water is taxed. Instead of having a sales tax on on water service, it's now an excise fee. So it's no longer part of that, it's no longer part of the collections that are there and yet we don't get a credit on the formula. So we've had a few, a couple of things that have come on that have occurred at a statewide level that have been a part of why we don't have the funding there and they don't credit us for it.
So, my next question's gonna be, taking all that into consideration, are we simply relying on inflation in order to get us back to a point where we're seeing that increment again?
We're just making some best guesses as to what the the future is and you know, one of the things that we have to watch is what happens over the course of the next couple of years with sales tax collections and I think it really is upon us to make a decision as we get to that FY twen- the FY twenty-two and FY twenty-four projects, are we seeing any collections there? This next phase that that we have in the FY twenty budget to do the extensions. Shoot, get me back to that slide. This this next phase that we have to do those two extensions on the north and south, we need to do in order to have that, what we've done so far be effective. The next phases, we can do some workarounds for some some level of time. The pumping stations, I'm Nick would say are pretty important, but we can still work around without spending that kinda money to make it to do that. So, I guess in answer your question, as we move forward, there's a couple of those those next two phases, we may wanna have some discussion if we're not seeing any collections. Does that make sense? That's that's probably two years out as we're into that that structure. We've delayed this this phase a year as is that we're on now because I've been concerned about collections and they're just not there and I, but I think that this has to occur. If we're gonna have this be successful, we need to do those tiebacks.
It feels like it's no longer really a reliable funding source.
No, it's not.
Because of where that base was set.
Now, if you were to go back and look through the the past history of sales tax collections over twenty years, this isn't the first time we've had a major reset. We've had at least one that was pretty close to as large of a reset and a second one that was not quite as large over the twenty year history. So, given that, those were both followed up with with slow increases. I think this time to your to your point is probably it's hurt, we're hurt because of online sales. At the same time, the change that has occurred with the Supreme Court ruling last year requiring that online retailers collect for all of their sales and distribute to the underlying entities will eventually help to offset that loss, cause they're supposed to get this caught back up. Some of them are collecting already. Some of them are collecting the state portion, but not the add-ons yet. But as time goes on, they're gonna have to get those added on or legally required to.
What's that timeline, do you know?
That was an immediate, but I mean, they were kinda given, I think till the end of end of this year of, I'm sorry, end of last year to to get that in place. But as I've, I mean, Nick, I don't know if you noticed, you'd made a comment about noticing collections. I don't know if you noticed if it was a six percent or seven percent. There's no reason for me to sit and listen to or wait for you on that, but yeah, I I don't know what the what the likelihood is of getting something accomplished there or seeing growth. It's also why, as we've, I think last year we talked about potentially being able to at least have a discussion about Cascade Bridge as a potential project. If if the sales tax collections were where they were supposed to be, that would be a much more viable discussion point right now. As it is, given that we don't have the sales tax collections coming in, we have an outs, we have an existing bond that has payments that that have to be made, that we have to somehow service, which is about the same amount of dollars that Cascade Bridge was. So, it it takes away that that discussion from even occurring. As we've talked about that project, I mean, that's as that comes forward in the future, from a transportation, just wanna reemphasize, from a transportation network perspective, it's not the one of our highest priorities. From a historic perspective, a lot of people see it as a high priority. And that's a discussion that then becomes a whole lot harder or difficult for the council when it does come up. I just don't think that you're able to be in a position to have a discussion about it right now. What we are looking at for geo debt is over a five year period. It's largely driven by streets. We fund one point seven, one point eight million annually for the base street programs, the overlay and then the miscellaneous street rehab that's coming out of here. You have a, I think Nick has a couple of other projects that are geo bonded, but those are the, the primary one is that base one point eight million a year. Riverfront improvements, this is one that we hadn't had a discussion about before. But to make the boating infrastructure grant, the Tiger Grant, work for that dock, to do, get the match done on the great places, the only being at three hundred thousand instead of the four hundred thousand asked for, we're looking at about about eight hundred thousand to be asked for out there in FY twenty-two to to do the matches on all those projects. The airport runway that was that was being requested by Mary earlier at the six hundred thousand and the fire pumper truck, six hundred thousand or so. So you see about ten million dollars of geo debt there and we had had about ten million of TIF debt. So two million in each category a year on average. And really the majority of the details, as you go through it, I I, again, whatever questions you have, please ask. But the each of the departments will kinda is responsible for trying to cover, give you a pretty good highlight of what they're looking for and asking. Asking for over the five years. What other questions did you have on this at this time?
I'm good. I think all my, the rest of my questions are gonna be answered by the department. That's good, but council, you guys?
Something I didn't note that Stephanie had handed out. She did have not just the projects by funding source and the projects and funding sources by department. She had a four sheets that will become part of the budget document. Two for the sales tax fund, the the summary page of information and then a listing of how the projects will be or what projects will be funded from sales tax in the FY twenty budget and then two sheets on how the hotel similar on hotel motel usage for the fiscal year twenty budget. Again, for the public, the CIP plan is out on the website. It is under both OpenGov and right there on the front page, there's a link to OpenGov. There's also right to the, just to the immediate right of the OpenGov link is one for the CIP five year report. You click on that and it'll give essentially the summary of what we've gone through tonight. With that, it looks like Matt's up.
Hold up just a minute there.
The bad thing about this, now I've been sitting back there making more notes in my presentation. Making it longer. I had a seven o'clock meeting. I don't think I'm gonna make it.
No, I don't think you're gonna make it, sir. Congratulations on firefighter firefighter Arnold and the way he handled the request for a tour. That's an outstanding letter to give.
He is a good employee.
That is an outstanding letter. Everybody good? Anybody need to get up, get up and do some jumping jacks, anything? Get the blood flowing?
I will later.
Get ready?
It's a little thinner this year.
Well, I put two slides on the page for you guys, so.
Well, like, you're condensing.
Oh, I thought it would be front to back, too.
I could have. I printed mine one per page, cause I needed the notes, but.
You guys ready to roll?
Ready.
Yep.
Whenever you're ready.
All right, so I'd just like to start off by thanking you for letting me present my budget. Several of my colleagues around the state, when we exchange emails or phone calls at budget time, they're like, we don't do, we don't give presentations to our council. And at first I'm like, what? That'd be awesome, you know, just, but. But they don't get the opportunity to have people ask questions and see their budgets presented to the council, sometimes ask for things from the council, they just, the city manager says yes or no and that's it. That's all they get to do with their budget. So, thanks for giving me the opportunity to, to do this. This is my, I've looked through, this is my seventh time giving a budget presentation, so actually recycled the format from twenty fourteen, the first one that I did, but. I'm going to briefly overview the department, I'll do an annual report in a couple of years, so I'll keep that part short, or a couple of months. And then I'll review the operating and capital budgets and then go over some historical information and then I'll finish up by talking about our revenue, our contracts for service with different people and how those work, so. And I'll just give you a heads up, my presentation is not law enforcement friendly. There's only one picture in here, this is the very last slide, so.
No offense. No offense, anyone.
All right. So like I said, I put one slide on a page, so when I flip to my pages, you don't have to necessarily turn your book there. So, this, obviously our budget, this is the heart of our budget. It's the forty-nine personnel that we have, forty-eight swarm staff, one civilian. Most of the staff there that you'll see from the battalion chief on down, those are the three shifts. They work twenty-four hour shifts, twenty-four on, forty-eight off. Each shift has a battalion chief, a captain, a lieutenant, and then a mixture of EMTs and paramedics. So, starting in nineteen ninety-seven, everyone is required to be a paramedic. So, you can kinda, it's not necessarily exactly in seniority order there, but you can see the, the younger people on down, some of those that are EMTs, like on the bottom row, they're either in class or testing currently for their paramedic. Actually, this one over here on the far left, EMT Walters, he's actually a paramedic, he just got that the other day. So, we're very proud of that, or he's very proud of that. A couple others are, two others we hired from Illinois, they have a different system, like everything else. It's different in Illinois, they have to retest for paramedics. They came here as Illinois paramedics, they come to Iowa, they can't even take a blood pressure anymore. So, they have to totally retest. This looks a lot like it did back when I started, as far as the shift strengths, there's fifteen on each of those shifts. That's similar, what we're missing there is the deputy chief. And I would say that's one position that we really do miss, that was a, a training position. As we get busier and busier, training obviously gets more and more important. We pick up more programs, more requirements of our job, that the paramedic program is a lot more rigorous than it used to be. So what we do, since we don't have a training officer, we've delegated the training responsibilities to each shift. So, first shift takes care of fire-related training. The second shift has what we call special operations, or it's anything that's not fire EMS, hazmat, confined space, ropes, all kinds of different things. A third shift takes care of EMS. And when I say they do the training, they, they schedule the training, they try to locate instructors, they keep track of it, they also do the inventory on the vehicles, they propose new changes to policy that have to deal with their specific area, so. Again, like I said, since twenty years ago, we're, we're doing a lot more things than we did back when I started. Public CPR classes, we do twice a day, or twice a month, anyway. Our smoke detector program, I didn't do it twice a day. Smoke detector program is very active. We do a lot of pre-planning, we have a good explorer program. We work more with outside entities than we ever have in the past, whether that be our mutual aid fire departments, different governmental agencies, we have contracts in Iowa, outside of Iowa. We're working on starting a new program called Remembering When. It's a fire and fall prevention program for senior citizens. And so we're trying to do all that and then on top of that, you know, I've mentioned it several times, our call volume is about double what it was back when I started. So, you're trying to do all that stuff and you can imagine trying to teach a class or have a class when people are running in and out of the door, it's, it's really hard to get done. So again, there's our daily staffing. Our minimum is eleven, generally we have twelve on duty. We staff two, three ambulances, two engines, and then we have a shift commander. A lot of people ask me, does it make sense to do twenty-four hour shifts? And just, just briefly, and we can have this discussion another day, but it does make sense because the law allows us to work twenty-four hour shifts. And if they would take no vacation or time off during the year, they're scheduled for twenty-nine hundred and twenty hours and they don't get overtime for those hours. So, if you would transition to an eight-hour shift in the forty-hour work weeks, your overtime costs are really high for that. So it makes sense only because that's something that's allowed for, for fire departments to run. The administrative staff, we have a billing manager, fire marshal, deputy chief and myself. We work the traditional Monday through Friday, forty-hour work weeks, we wish. We come in, you know, on a regular basis for emergency calls and of course, we, we attend a lot of meetings that are generally after hours. Again, there's our call volume, I went back to nineteen ninety-eight, so just to be a twenty-year span there. Obviously, the biggest jump is in our ambulance calls. So twenty-nine forty, two thousand nine hundred and forty-one calls in nineteen ninety-eight, we're up to, just short of fifty-four hundred for twenty eighteen. So here's our operating budget, getting into the numbers. Our FY nineteen, you can see our personnel budget there, was just over five million for twenty twenty. About the same, we're asking for a hundred and eighty-seven dollars, so I thought that was pretty good. Our non-personnel side is, is up slightly too, and there's a lot of reasons for that. Probably the biggest one, again, is the pension costs are actually lower. Even though people are getting a raise, the amount of money that goes towards their pension from the city side is less for next year. So the total of our budget, our projected budget is up eleven thousand two seventy-seven or point two percent. I would guess venturing our twenty nineteen approved budget, we're gonna be under that. I don't wanna make any promises, but I think we'll be significantly below that, but we'll see where that ends up. The reason for the non-personnel increases, obviously, the one down there at the bottom is the station three. We didn't, we've never had a station three, so those costs are for telephone equipment and we estimated our utility bill, we still haven't received one, so we're not sure what that's gonna be. We guessed on the high side and took it times twelve and plugged that in there. As we take more calls, obviously we need more fuel for the ambulances, so that, that cost went up and we've used a lot more supplies. Station three, or station two, the airport station, the guys out there want to do some work on the kitchen, so. I put it in there, we just put it in the regular budget, not in the capital. If we would take that same project and bid it out and have contractors, it would have been something that would have been a CIP project, but they're doing countertops, refi finishing the cabinets, sink, and I think one or two, maybe both appliances that are in there, so. They asked me if they could do that, I thought that's a great project if they're volunteering to do that. Stop me at any time if you have a question. So, FY twenty twenty, those are just the individual line items out of our budget. Fire administration, fire control, I'm not even gonna read all the numbers there, but again, it's up point two percent overall for personnel and non-personnel items. We did move, so you'll see our fire control looks like it's down and then ambulance is up about forty percent. We took six people out of the fire control budget and put them into the ambulance budget just because that's how we staff on a, on a daily basis. So, it's a more realistic view of where our personal, personnel are at. So our revenue, I thought it was kinda neat to look back at twenty eleven. We were just, just cracking the one million dollar mark and that's almost all ambulance back then. That's before we were doing the townships for fire, so almost all, there's a little bit of hazmat in there. So for fiscal year eighteen, the year we just finished up, our, our revenue was about one point eight million. So grew about eight million dollar, or eight hundred thousand dollars in that timeframe. Here in a, a year or two, we're gonna double what we were in twenty eleven, so we're gonna be in the two million dollar revenue range. And so the fire department net cost of the general fund, so FY eleven, the year we had the million dollars, we were about just over three million. FY eighteen, three point three, you see we're right in that three point. At the end of fiscal year twenty twenty, we should be three point three million dollars again. And that's because of our, the revenue was so high. I say so high, but it's went up quite a bit. Some other revenue that doesn't get countered in this is the, the revenue we receive for capital items. We did the fitness equipment last year that we received on an AFG grant. Couple of years ago, we had, got heart monitors on a grant. This, this fiscal year we're in now, we got the grant for the hydraulic rams, which we had had in the capital budget, so we didn't have to purchase those out of the city funds. We had a grant for that. And then we get a lot of donations that we put in to different funds. We have an ambulance advancement fund and then we have the fire prevention fund. And that probably gets more donations now than anything and that's what we use to offset smoke detectors. If, when we get low and the Alps don't have money, we use that fund to purchase smoke detector, that's all donated money. So revenue for this past year, you see fire control, I'm not sure, I'm not really sure exactly what we did to, for that revenue, probably copying charges or providing reports or something. Fire control, those are, that's the bigger, that was the Safer Grant, provided a lot of that money. Also the fire contract with the townships, which I'll talk about. Fire prevention was inspection fees. Hazardous materials, I'll talk about that again later too, that's what we collect from the county, that's for our hazmat team on an annual basis. Airport, we get that reimbursed from the airport, nine thousand eight hundred, and that's to provide airport fire protection. And that's one of those things where I look at, we get ninety-eight hundred dollars for that. Our training, just to, to do our training is about ninety-eight hundred dollars. We spent three thousand in overtime and around sixty-five hundred to, to have the training at the station. So, about ninety-five hundred we spent last year to do, just to do the training. That doesn't count, you know, having somebody there to provide airport protection or, you know, fix the airport fire truck, we just put all new batteries in there. I don't know what that bill came up to, but ninety-eight hundred dollars. And I, and I realize when we're talking the airport, well, let's make it twenty thousand. Well, then the city just pays more for the airport operations, I think that's, and it doesn't, you know, maybe it doesn't wash out and then it doesn't matter that we only get ninety-eight hundred dollars for that protection, but. At one point in time, we were providing a person every time a flight came in or out, a commercial flight, somebody had to sit in the station and that's what they would like to happen, but with our call volume, we, we can't guarantee that we're gonna leave somebody at the airport. That's, you know, four flights in and out a day, it gets to be where somebody's there almost all the time during the daytime hour, so. We do the best we can, we try to leave people out there for that, but that's not a twenty-four seven thing that we can do. And obviously, the ambulance revenue was pretty high last year, one point three. That includes current year billing, so all the people that took the ambulance ride this month, we billed them, they paid the bill the next month, that's counted. There's also what we call the old debt, anything over a year old that Dana collects, that's all included in there. And then any contracts we have, so with the CTAA or the, yeah, CTAA, that money would be included in that ambulance fund there. Most of the increase that's, we've seen in the ambulance, isn't it because we've raised our rates? Actually, our rates are lower than average in the state. And we kinda, we have a, a way we, the council passed a resolution, I don't know, maybe twenty fourteen, where it just automatically readjusts our rate on an annual basis according to a, it's the Medicaid formula, the Blue Cross Blue Shield. Amount that they, they, they will reimburse it. So it automatically, but every year it just, it's like a few dollars in each different category. So the rates haven't went up, it's been the number of calls that we take that has went way up. So, that really does increase our revenue there.
Your, in, one change for revenue that you hadn't me- mentioned. Going into fiscal twenty twenty, you're gonna have the ground emergency medical transport?
I'll talk about that.
Okay.
I'll cover that. That's one, a lot of people want to know about our overtime and that's something that, you know, I wish we had zero basically overtime. I wish our overtime was a cover, well, I wish we had no fires, but we do have fires and that's when we, you know, that's when we want to use the overtime to call people back in, to staff the stations, so we have an ambulance crew, because sure enough, every time we go to a fire, the ambulance tones keep dropping and we need people to take those calls. So, that's the kinda overtime that's more acceptable than, we're, we're below minimum staffing, we have to hire back. So, you can see in twenty twelve, two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars that year. And it's, it's fluctuated in that range, you know, that's the high. Our low in twenty fifteen was seventy-two thousand, that was the, the year we had our first Safer Grant. So, we had a little bit of a cushion there before we had to hire back for overtime. Lost the Safer, we went out of the Safer Grant there, had a couple more high years. Last year was another good year. This year, you know, we're, we're actually higher than I thought we would be at this point in time in the year, we're sixty-four thousand. There's a couple drivers for that, like I said, three thousand for the R F training, that's one. The tamofire alone was about nine thousand dollars in overtime. So that's, that's more than we would normally spend on, for the entire month we spent just at one event. Twenty twenty, that's just what we, we have budgeted for this year.
Chief, quick question.
Yeah.
Do we have fire response service charges that we serve?
We have it for motor vehicle accidents. It's a two hundred and fifty dollar charge unless you're a resident, then it's one fifty. We have a grass fire charge, we've only used it a couple of times and it's only from, if they're burning illegally and we respond. If it's an honest, a lot of people will have a grass fire, they have no idea how it started. We don't charge the property owners for those fires, but those are the only two fire response fees, car, car fires. It's two hundred and fifty or one fifty for a resident. So, non-personnel costs, the, the biggest one in our non-personnel costs is our fleet maintenance. We're hoping this new engine that we're, we're buying will take a big chunk out of our apparatus, you know, maintenance and repair charges. It's our biggest one and it's also the most unpredictable. You, you just don't know from year to year, you try, you hope you budget enough in there, but if you, you know, have a transmission or an engine problem, those repairs can get really pricey in a hurry. So we budgeted eighty-two thousand for FY twenty. In FY twenty eighteen, we spent thirty-seven thousand on those repairs, so that wasn't too bad of a year. Fuel is another, you know, again, as the busier we get, the more we spend on fuel. Our utilities, like this time of the year, you know, we have huge apparatus bays. We, we have to keep our ambulances at a certain temperature for the drug regulation, so those bays are heated. They're not air-conditioned, but this time of year, when they, every time they run in and out of the door, then the heaters come on. You know, that gets, our utility bills definitely go up this time of year. And then again, training is another big expense for our department that's not, not personnel related. Our FY twenty twenty capital items, our big one is the fire engine, that's the one that we've already ordered, council approved. We've talked to the vendor several times, we should have that truck sometime in the first couple of weeks of July. We have a couple meetings with him coming up to finalize some of the stuff on that. And again, that, that should really help on the, the apparatus repair charges. Fire gear for FY twenty, we have turnout gear, that's something that you'll see repeated every fiscal year. We try to buy six sets of turnout gear and what that does is replace seven people's turnout gear. Every seven years, they get new turnout gear, sorry. So, six sets of gear a year, some hose, some nozzles and a portable pump to replace one that went out of service. That's what we would use if we go out on the river for a cabin fire or out in the county somewhere where we need to pump out from a, from a pond or some other improvised water source, so. or some other improvised water source, so.
I thought we had, uh, I thought we had some, uh, uh, some contributions that were being made for turnout gear. Did that stop, or was that, did we, was that just a one-year deal?
For turnout gear?
Yeah, that somebody donated, uh, some money toward, uh, okay.
No, n- never that, that I'm, I don't, I'm not aware of any of that. We've been doing the twelfth, well, we started at ten thousand, we bumped it to twelve thousand a couple of fiscal years ago, I think.
Well, I, I thought we got some, I just thought we had some, uh, support on, on that a couple of years from some, some, I can't remember what it was, okay.
Not that I'm aware of. Uh, the hose tower repairs are fifteen thousand, and if you remember from last year, that was in this fiscal year's budget. We were gonna do that this year, uh, however, we had an emergency repair we needed to do at Station Two with the heating and air conditioning. Uh, so we, we, for, we didn't do that one, we went ahead and fixed the heating and air conditioning at Station Two, which was a twenty-plus-year-old heating and air conditioning system that really never worked right. As in, we, like, the summertime, we had to run two large dehumidifiers in there to keep the humidity level down, or run the air conditioner at sixty or below to make it run enough to keep the humidity out of the air, so. Not a very efficient system, we needed to make some repairs to it, so we thought, well, now's the time to go ahead and replace it. And I think twenty years for a heating and air conditioning is about right. Uh, so we replaced that when we didn't do the hose tower. Um, so we put that back in for this fiscal year. Uh, that's the hose tower at Station Two, if you look at the station, the, the part that goes way up in the air, that's the hose tower. On the, the outside is great, I think when they remodeled the station, they did some tuck pointing on the outside of the station, but inside of there, a lot of the material's fallen down in there, so we had a couple of estimates done on tuck pointing inside that, that hose tower. The power load systems, when I was up here talking about the new ambulance last year, and I talked about the power load system for the new ambulance, it's about a forty one thousand dollar addition to the ambulance, uh, cost. This cost eighty six thousand, we'll put that same system in both of our other two first-out ambulances. So all the ambulances will have a power cot and a powered lift system. Uh, so when you get the cot up to the ambulance, it actually grabs onto the cot, and it's all push-button, it, it raises the cot up, lifts the, the wheels up, and you just, you just push it in, it's gonna save, I mean, they have all kinds of figures that they throw around on the back injuries and what you're gonna save this department, but I'm sure in the long run, we are gonna save back injuries, I just don't wanna make a prediction on, on how much, but. Uh, when you're running forty-three, forty-four hundred ambulance calls a year, that's a lot of lifting in and out, up and down, so it's gonna save a lot of that. Uh, Station Two kitchen, actually, that's a general fund project, again, that's the one that the guys are volunteering to do. Uh, the Knox box devices, that was something that was in FY twenty, we went ahead and got it this year. It's gonna be hard to explain, so we got a grant for the hydraulic rams that were in this year's budget, so we didn't use that money, so we used that money to purchase the Knox boxes and part of the heating and air conditioning. So we spent no additional money this year, got the Knox boxes all taken care of, got the Station Two heating and air conditioning done, so we were able to take that out of.
What's a Knox box?
Okay, and, uh.
He said it's too hard to explain.
No. Yeah, their boxes on the outside of, well, the Knox, there's two that, we have, we have a box in our vehicles, most, all the ambulances, the first-out engines and the fire command vehicle has a, a lock box with, each person has a code. They put their code in there, they can take the key out, and that key will get them into, several area businesses have a, a box. You put the key in the box, you open the box, the, the building keys are inside the box. So our, we're the only ones, you know, business owners can't get in there and change the keys, if they wanna put new keys in there, we have to come out and open the box. Several years ago, we went to the, the keypad, it used to just be, uh, everybody had the same combination, then we went to, you put your personalized PIN number in there, and the fire marshal could go around, hook his computer up to him, and then he could see who accessed the, the Knox box and when. Now, the way they are, it's gonna be very similar to that, only the, they're wireless, so you don't have to go around to fifteen Knox boxes with a computer and plug in. We'll be able to see right away who accessed the Knox box and when. Business owners, I think, will find that comforting, 'cause they're always a little uncomfortable with, I'm gonna put my keys in this box, but if you ever held one of those boxes, they're, they're armored and they're really thick, and they're, they're bolted to the building, it'd be very hard to get off, and about impossible to get your keys out of, so. I don't know that anybody's ever had a problem with their Knox box, and there are several residential places that have them, they're great. You know, we go there on ambulance call and somebody fell, they might not be injured, they don't want us busting down their door to get in. We love to bust down doors, but we can just go to the Knox box, get the key out and, and get in and out, so. Anywhere that has a lot of residential, any apartments, they all have Knox boxes, a lot of the businesses, if they have alarms or, uh, you know, fire alarms or sprinkler system, then they have a Knox box. It became a requirement, I think, with the twenty twelve fire code for a lot of businesses, so, um, there are more and more of them going up.
For the record, I have four doors that you guys knocked down, so.
For the record, you should've saw Workman light up when he talked about knocking indoors.
So future capital items, next year, there's, it's a pretty light year. It might change by next year, but the turnout gear, again, that just continues through, and then we have a positive pressure ventilation fan in there, and it's a battery-powered unit. Now we have a lot of gas-powered fans or electric fans that you have to have a generator, well, we're not putting generators on all our new trucks, so. Uh, we'd have to carry a little Honda generator out to plug them into. The battery-powered ones, we'll just take off the truck, go put in front of the door. The biggest reason for going with the battery-powered ones is we have a lot of carbon monoxide calls, and it didn't make a lot of sense, you're trying to clear out a house from carbon monoxide, and you're putting a gas-powered fan in the doorway, and you're blowing exhaust gas into the house. It, it helps some, but not as much as you would like, so the battery-powered fans will be great, so.
Okay.
Lot of things that we have anymore are going to battery-powered, it's amazing what batteries can do. Uh, FY twenty twenty-two, again, the turnout gear, uh, we need to start replacing heart monitors, it's hard to believe. Uh, a fire marshal vehicle, and then another ambulance. FY twenty-three, turnout gear again, and that's, the used tender's in there for two hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, the reason we ask for a used tender, uh, it's something that we don't use every day, but we do use quite often. Uh, what we're wanting to do, we have a plan to, to get our vehicle fleet reduced by at least one large apparatus. If you're ever in our stations, it's, there's no parking spots left for one, and two, every piece of the equipment you have, and you gotta maintain it, you have, you know, extra bills for those. Uh, so with a used tender, we're gonna be able to take two of our other tenders that are fifteen hundred gallons, and reduce it to one that's a three thousand gallon, so it'll carry three thousand gallons of water, uh, to a fire, and it can be driven by one person versus two trucks, you know, with fifteen hundred gallons, you need two people for that, so. That's the biggest reason why we're adding the tender in there. Uh, FY twenty twenty-four, again, just, so far I have just the turnout gear, and I, I had a chief's vehicle in there, Jim voluntarily dropped that out of there for me.
He's a sweetheart like that.
I think, I'm not sure, but I think we had to give him, is that one that I gave up voluntarily, I don't remember now.
I think he might've.
Okay.
Somewhere in there.
So actually, the fire marshal and I, we just put our cars in there, and we decided, you know, when it becomes twenty twenty-two, whichever one needs replaced the most, that's the one that we'll do, so, uh. So any, any questions on the capital budget? I would like to make one comment about the ambulance, so I've been saying this since we went with Lifeline ambulances, well, three ambulances ago now. After this purchase here, we're gonna start re-chassis-ing the ambulances, so the boxes are good enough that we can just send that whole ambulance up there, and they just put it on a new Ford chassis and you keep the box. And that price will be, he, the last time I asked him, he said one fifty, so to re-chassis. So you'll, significant savings on the ambulances, uh, when that happens, and I'm not sure how many times you can re-chassis those with the same, uh, box configuration.
Clock?
Yeah, Kevin Clocky.
No, no, no.
Oh, clock.
Any chance?
Oh, I get a clock?
So I did a ride-along with the guys, and, uh, we were talking over dinner when I was doing my ride-along, and the biggest complaint that they had is they wanted a clock in the Burlington Department, I don't see that in your plan.
Yeah, I forgot I was gonna put that in FY twenty twenty four.
They can remodel the kitchen, man.
I, I told him I'd work on it.
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions for you, chief.
Yeah.
I'm, I was curious about the Remember When program.
Yeah.
Yeah, tell me a little bit more about that.
It's an NFPA, so a National Fire Protection Association program, and it's, it's got like, uh, eighteen, uh, messages for fall prevention and fire prevention that are aimed at senior citizens. So there's a couple different ways you can deliver the program, you can do a large group, so if you can go out somewhere where a lot of senior citizens would gather, you could do a presentation, or like now, when we do the door, when we go out and knock on doors and do smoke detectors, you could actually do a shorter version, you could, you know, use that as a checklist inside the home. You know, we already do the fire prevention, we're really good at doing that, the fall prevention's like, we're not really, we've never really been trained in that, or we don't know what we're looking for exactly, but I can tell you, when we, we started with this group that's, that got us involved, I ran off our calls, last year we did seven hundred ambulance calls worth for fall, so. I mean, if you could cut that, you know, a quarter or something, you know, it's obviously something that we need to work on, and, you know, that's something that gets elderly people in the ho- hips and you name it, they end up in the hospital for that, so.
I bet you could, um, tie in with some partnerships, maybe with the, the hospital, the congress meal sites, and the senior centers, and.
Yeah, it's, it, well, it's, they came to us from Iowa City, the University of Iowa, they, they're gonna do two pilot cities, Cedar Rapids and Burlington, so.
Okay.
Actually, Bruce Workman, he's gonna be in charge of it, but him and I so far from the fire department have attended the, the meetings, but yes, it's, uh, southeast Iowa area on agency, the hospital, there's a whole list of people. We're just the, the fire department side of it, but I think it's gonna be really good.
Oh, yeah, it sounds, it sounds very promising.
Yeah.
And my second question was, are ambulance rates, are they comparable with other areas of the state, or are we too low, do we need to adjust?
You can raise them as high as you want, but most reimbursements are set like Medicare, Medicaid, that's what it is. Uh, the only people that really suffer when you raise your rates is private pay.
Yeah.
They pay the whole thing.
Okay.
You know, so, um.
Okay, bad question, okay, then my last question is, I, I was just curious, you said the medications had to be kept at a constant temperature? In, in the trucks?
Right, so the, our, all of our medications belong to Great River, the pharmacy. We don't own, we don't own them until we give them to a patient, then we have to pay for them, but up until then, they own them.
Okay.
And there's a temperature range for each drug, so we take, what's the lowest low of the, the drugs that we have, and what's the highest high? And then that's, I can't remember exactly what those are now, it's like a hundred and something, and maybe forty? And so we have a thermometer in the ambulance, and it measures the high and low, and we have to record that every week, 'cause you can't fall outside of those ranges, otherwise you have to replace your, your drug bags, and then we'd have to pay for them, so.
Okay.
That's why you'll see if an ambulance would come downtown for training or something like this time of year, if we can't put it inside, it's outside running. And I forgot to men, well, I'm gonna mention that at the end, but we try to keep people in their stations so their ambulances aren't sitting outside in the, in the real cold or the real hot and, and running, you know?
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I'll just real quickly go through the different agreements that we have, so CTAA, our current agreement, I've never liked it, 'cause in order to get reimbursed anything, we have to say that we're losing money with our ambulance service, which I'm thinking, that's a, not a very good business model. The more money we lose, the more you pay, so, uh, in twenty thirteen, what they paid us was about seventy two thousand dollars. Twenty seventeen was forty, twenty eighteen was thirty-three, and it's fluctuated up and down, there's some really low years back in the late two thousands. So basically, what we did is when we lost money, we had to figure out how many of our calls were in their districts. And then if it was twenty percent of the calls were in the CTAA, they paid twenty percent of the loss. It's always been around the seventeen, eighteen percent mark. Last year, when we started the third ambulance, we went to them and said, hey, we wanna add these other six people to the ambulance, and it's really gonna make it look like we're losing money, we're gonna lose even more money. I hate saying the ambulance is losing all this money, but, um, it's gonna look like that, and their, their cost was gonna go way up. Well, the townships, they did, the way that townships fund fire and EMS, there's no way they can pay that amount. They, they, they tax at the maximum levy now, and they can't pay any more than that, so. That was kinda out, so we went to a per capita formula, at least to say, we're gonna set a base rate, we're gonna know from year to year, we can look out four or five years and know about what our reimbursements are gonna be. Uh, so we set that, and I also looked at the area, uh, counties around us, what do they pay? All the ambulances are getting some type of a subsidy. Uh, Lee County, uh, Henry County, Loisa County, all the ambulances get something from the county, uh, to provide service, so. We settle on the five dollars for the first year, six for the second, and then seven for every year thereafter, so. In twenty nineteen, the estimate would be fifty five thousand from the CTAA, and twenty twenty-one would be seventy seven thousand. It'll probably be lower than that, 'cause there's a group that's gonna drop out of the CTA, and I'll talk about that, I think it's on the next slide. Uh, one other reason I wanted to go to the per capita is we, right now, we don't have anything in place with Henderson County. So if we go over there and we meet up on the side of the road with their ambulance, and our paramedic gets out, gets in their ambulance, continues on to Great River, we bill the ambulance service for that, three hundred dollars, and they just pay us. If we go over there on a regular nine-one-one call, we're the only service there, we pick up the patient, go to Great River, we bill the patient directly. That's very similar to what we do with the rest of the CTAA, well, they're all paying something for the service. Henderson County has never paid for that, and it started out as a very rare to, you know, I'm gonna say we take twenty calls over there a month, maybe more, just fluctuates, and probably half of those, we're the primary ambulance, and we're hauling the patient in our ambulance. So when we went to the per capita, I approached Henderson County and said, everybody else is going to this, can we go to this for Henderson County? And it'll be a percentage base, so if we take, for easy math, we take fifty percent of their ambulance calls, they'll pay a fifty percent of the per capita rate at the end of the year, so. Uh, we have a meeting with them coming up, but I'm pretty sure that's not gonna be a problem for them, they're, they love the Burlington ambulance over there, so. They call, we respond, it's, uh, we're very reliable. Uh, G E M T, uh, Jim had mentioned this, uh, basically what this is gonna do is, it's gonna make up for what it costs us to run the ambulance or to transport a patient versus what Medicaid pays per patient, per, uh, transport, so. It doesn't have anything to do with Medicare, only our Medicaid patients, which is somewhere around twenty percent of our calls are Medicaid. Right now, if we go out and we have a advanced life support call, and the patient's has Med- and the patient has Medicaid, we get about a hundred dollars of reimbursement. The bill that we'll send out will be seven hundred, but we get a hundred, and that's the most that we can get. If you were a private pay or had Blue Cross Blue Shield, we would get the full seven hundred dollars, so. What G E M T does, it makes up that portion that you're not making off the Medicaid patient, so. They don't base it on what your bill is, they base it on what your cost of transport is, so. I have no idea what that's gonna be, uh, different people have figured it out for different services. Probably somewhere in the thousand to twelve hundred dollar range is what actually costs for the service, so they'll pay a percentage of that. Uh, it's supposed to start, uh, July first of twenty nineteen, where we start getting a, uh, initial, instead of getting a hundred dollars every time we invoice a Medicaid patient, we'll get, they're gonna add some to that, it may be, we'll get two hundred or we'll get three hundred, and then twice a year, we'll submit all the Medicaid claims, and then they'll, they'll give us one big makeup payment, and that's a, it's a federal government program. The state writes the plan, the federal government supplies the money, the state writes the checks, but it doesn't cost the state of Iowa anything. It does cost somebody, I mean, it's, it's tax money, but it comes from the state level, or from the, the federal government level. A lot of states have already done this, I was a little leery that, oh, we're gonna do this, we're gonna think, oh, here we got a new funding source, and then they'll, they'll yank it away. They, they say this is such a very small part of the Medicaid system, that they're not gonna do that, and, and, people are relying on this money to keep their ambulance services whole. I already said Burlington has a high percentage of Medicaid patients, so. We're estimating, I think, on the low side, on what that'll mean year to year, we're just, we put in two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and I don't remember, did you increase that year after year?
I just have, I just have a small escalator until we know what, 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 we need to see what we're gonna get.
Yeah. So our fire contract, uh, currently with the Quad Township, we have a contract with them just for fire protection. And what they do is they tax at the maximum levy for fire and EMS, it's sixty and three-quarter cents. Uh, they take that money, they give us eighty percent for fire coverage, so they hold back twenty percent, and that's what they use for the CTAA, for the ambulance side. Uh, after we proposed this new agreement for the CTAA, they said, well, how about we just do one contract and just give you all of the money, or ninety-eight percent of it? I said, sounds good, they'll just have one contract for fire and EMS, uh, they'll vote on that in March. Uh, I don't think there's gonna be any problem with that, so. That amount we were getting, one thirty-three, will be up to about one thirty-three. That amount we were getting, one thirty-three, will be up to about one thirty-three, or one sixty-three, probably be a little bit higher than that, but. That's what we're looking at, that'll be for fire and EMS for the four townships that surround Burlington. Tampa Union, Concordia, and Flint River. Uh, the Hazmat Materials Contract, this, this has been the same since its inception. It must've been somewhere around nineteen ninety-seven when I started, I think, is when we started collecting that. Uh, this is, it was based on a per capita for Des Moines County, and I don't know if that's the forty-eight thousand that they actually pay us, or the amount we get to keep, which is more in the. Forty-two hundred, or forty-two thousand dollar range, we have to reimburse Des Moines County Emergency Management fifty-six hundred. I don't know, was Des Moines County's population ever forty-eight thousand? I don't, I don't know, but it was originally based on the one dollar per capita, and then the idea at the time was. Des Moines County's gonna have this hazmat team, the Burlington Fire Department, and then we're gonna contract out to Henry County, Loisa County, Lee County. And I guess at the time, we, we tried that, and nobody wanted to pay a dollar per capita, so. There's some other hazmat teams that are doing it for like fifteen cents per capita, so. For instance, Henry County, they're, they're contracted with Muscatine for hazmat coverage. Lee County ended up forming their own team. So we have that coming in every year, and then the big, the biggest, uh. Bigger portion of the last couple of years anyway has been the SAFER Grant, again, that covered for six additional firefighters for three years. Reimbursed at seventy-five percent of wages for the first two years, and then thirty-five percent, uh, the last year. It ends October of twenty twenty, so. Doesn't really, I mean, we're into it for this whole fi- uh, fiscal year twenty twenty, and then the next fiscal year is when we only have the partial funding for about three months' time. Uh, what we did with that was that we increased our minimum staffing from ten to eleven, and we added the third, uh, ambulance. Obviously, it's helped us lower our overtime. So I think I'm about done, but what, one thing I did wanna say about the, our budget overall, I mean, it's not much of an increase from last year to this year. It's pretty small, but what I'd like to do is think long-term, and, you know, after this fiscal year, somehow plan on keeping the, this level of personnel. And I think you could see our revenue now, and, and then it's even higher, so. Uh, that comes really from taking more calls, more responsibilities, that, that staffing is really needed to take those calls. Keep our overtime at a, a decent level where people aren't working a twenty-four-hour shift and being up all night, and they said, hey, you know, I need you to work another twenty-four-hour shift. I mean, that's not a good thing to ask of your employees, I don't wanna ask people to do that. So, that's what I'm asking for this year, is plan on that for next year. Uh, really quick, I just wanted to touch on our grants. Uh, obviously, we write all of our own, we paid for one grant when I first became the chief, and that was what we got our first SAFER Grant from, was that we paid somebody to write that. Ever since then, we've wrote our own grants internally, and we've been very successful with those. Uh, we try to replace items that are on the CIP, or on our, we have a running list of capital items, we rate them every year, a lot of them you don't see, we just say internally. It'd be nice to have that, but we don't need it necessarily, but if somebody would come along and say, you know, say ADM, they've, several years they've given us grants for. We bought iPads one year, I'm trying to remember what we got from them last, oh, we got, we replaced all of our, uh, hand tools, our battery-powered tools, they've replaced all those for us, so. Those are items that were on our list that I just didn't bring to the council to put on the CIP, but we use those grants to try to replace those types of things, we don't buy things that we don't. We don't go buy reg- whatever, things that we don't need as a fire department. Uh, the smoke detector program, that's been one hundred percent funded by grants and donations, uh, we had a big grant from the state to start it, and then the Elks Club has really been. The people that have kept us going in that program, every year, not only are they going out knocking on doors with us, they're applying for their own grants within the Elks Club. Uh, they've done some fundraisers along with us for that, so, so far, we've been able, we, a couple of times, we got real low on smoke detectors, but we've always been able to replace them, so. I don't know, how many are we up to, Bruce? Three thousand is?
Third or three hundred, something like that.
Yeah.
Over, uh, four years.
So it's been a great program. Uh, we save a lot of money with our in-house instructors, so just today, we had ten people in for CPR training, we've outside people, but we train our own people. We have instructors that we've sent to school or wherever, and they're CPR instructors, they teach all of our own in-house CPR. Advanced cardiac life support is our own people, uh, pediatric advanced life support, so instead of paying somebody to come in or sending people to Iowa City or wherever. To take these classes that you have to do every year, we do those all in-house. Uh, I don't know if everybody knows what Zoom is, now, we used to use a different one, the other big one, I can't remember.
Go-to-meeting?
Yeah, go-to-meeting, we used that for a long time, now we're using Zoom, the county has a, well, it's Region Five B, anyway, they have a, a Zoom account that we borrow. And so what we do is we keep, if we're having training that doesn't require you to do some type of skill, we just leave people in their stations, their vehicles are sitting there, they're not using fuel. They're in their territory, so they can respond better to calls, so. Uh, and of course, we've always done the janitorial and the maintenance work as much as possible in-house, so we do all the painting, we've done that big flooring project at Station One. A lot of the vehicle repairs, we do ourself, we do pretty much all the snow removal, that's not real popular, but we do that, and we do the mowing in the summertime. I think I mentioned all the grants. So is there any questions?
You, you said someone was dropping out of the city tan- township ambulance agreement?
Yes, that, and that's the Quad Township.
Okay.
That's those four, they'll drop out, but then they'll just have the one contract.
Oh, okay, okay, I misunderstood.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do quest.
No, I think you've done an excellent job finding ways to get things accomplished for your department, whether it be, you know, doing things in-house. With repairs and maintenance, or being resourceful with your, you know, with the grant writing you do, I've always found. The fact that you do that and you go out there and get help with them, it's great.
Thank you. Really is in the bar for first responders in this community, Chief.
Anything else?
Thanks, Chief. I don't have anything.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
James? Clap on, clap off.
That's it for tonight, tomorrow night is, is it library?
Library.
And then dawn, dawn on the timer.
Woo! All right.
Five thirty?
Uh, five thirty, is it five thirty?
That's right, we'll be back again tomorrow night at five thirty, so, uh, thank you for, uh, tuning in tonight, thank you, Steph. Good night, everybody.